I'm going to open the Blackstone-Milville Regional School District School Committee Public Hearing for Grade Reconfiguration for the school year 2425. If we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we will do introduction of members.
Matt Catalano, Milville.
Chuck Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Milville.
Erin Binaco, Milville.
Dan Keefe, Blackstone.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Jill Pillagallarani, Assistant Superintendent Director of Student Services.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Thank you. And we do have one other member that will be joining us very shortly. I'm just going to go through the process of our public hearing. We do hold them every year for our budget. We're going to run this one for grade reconfiguration in the same order. So we will have a presentation from the superintendent on his recommendation. There will be time for public comment, and then there will be a motion on the floor within the school committee, and that's our time to discuss and move on the motion. And then that public hearing will end. We will move into our budget public hearing. Same process. That public hearing will end, and then we have a 7:00 PM posted school committee meeting with its own agenda. So with that being said, I just, do you need to open? Okay. I would like to introduce our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. DeFalco, who I believe the community already knows very well. A lot of work in a little bit of time. There have already been other public forums held for this information. We're going to wrap it up for everyone here tonight with hopefully all the information we need to get to a vote on this this evening. So thank you for your time and efforts, and they're very short.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Actually, Jill Pillagallarani is going to be kind of co-facilitating the discussion tonight as it relates to our presentation, and so I'm going to kick it over to Jill to lead us off.
Great, thank you. So I think every time we have a presentation, we always start with grounding our discussion in our district blueprint, which is there. And if you remember, anything that we do, the directions initiative we take is grounded here, and the goals in our blueprint, which are connected to our curriculum, instruction, the whole child, and the community. And by saying that, some of our goals, one of our district improvement goals, which is directly connected to the conversation we're going to have tonight, is our facilities and creating spaces to maximize learning. If you look at this, one of the goals was for long and short-term planning for our district, and doing that, including our school committee, our building committee, our BMRSD community, and our district leadership team. And if you look at the bottom, one of the ways we're going to measure this has to do with not only addressing the building systems and structural issues, but it's also the unused space. And again, if you look back at our blueprint, it definitely talks about an inclusive approach, and our community goal actually states that we continue to engage all stakeholders and to seek feedback and encourage active engagement.
So if you've had the opportunity to join a couple of the other conversations, this slide might look familiar to you, and this is really to kind of delve into the different conditions that have been set that kind of underscore the urgency of doing this work in addition to what Jill shared already as it relates to one of our goals, one of our district goals for this school year, is to address the space and facilities issues. And while I won't read these to you, because I'm sure many of you in the room have seen this multiple times at this point, there are a couple of things that I do want to bring to everyone's attention. And really, that is essentially the first and the last bullets. And I think, you know, the ones in between are equally as important, but I do want to kind of bookend the discussion points with these two. The first is just the fact of the matter, which is the system is built for twice the amount of students that we have. It was built for over 3,000 students. We haven't had 3,000 students here in at least the last decade, I'm not sure, prior to that. But our enrollment has stabilized over 1,500, which is great. We saw a fairly significant decrease during the COVID time, the COVID pandemic, and just after, and then saw a nice uptick the past couple of years. So we are definitely stabilizing our enrollment, our student enrollment, just over 1,500, which we're really pleased. I think that's an important number for all of us to remember, because it does seem to be that we are at a stable place with the number of students that are in our school district. Of course, that's one of the main drivers of the overall grade reconfiguration. The last bullet is something that I do want to spend a minute on, which is really this idea of a new approach. And while it isn't necessarily a new approach as far as the grade span and grade configuration to some of the communities around us, it is new to us. And I want to speak for a minute as a former middle school principal, but also as a parent. I haven't met one parent yet in my experience who has been excited about middle school, right? Like, and year after year after year, we get feedback from our families about our middle school experience. And just a quick personal anecdote, I sit on the board at my church in town, and I was having a meeting recently with a member who is, I believe, in her 70s, and was sharing that I have a freshman and a senior in our local school system, public school system. And she had said, oh, my children went through the system as well. They had a great experience, except for middle school. And I actually laughed out loud, and I thought, it's got to be the age and stage, there's something here with that, you know, 12 to kind of 14, and having, you know, that grade span all in one place. And so I think for me, one of the things that we haven't talked a lot about, but is something we need to discuss, is just the idea of what is possible by bringing different groups of students together as far as the different age and stage and developmental components for each of our students. You know, there's a lot of opportunity. I know parents are worried and concerned, and we'll talk about it in a bit, about, you know, 4th and 7th graders being together in the building and on a bus and all the things. But honestly, I think there is some really great opportunities for leadership, for mentoring. And yes, we will have plans in place to keep, you know, grade spans separate in different parts of the buildings and assign seats on the bus to address and allay some of the worry. But at the end of the day, I have taken the time to visit another neighboring town that has a 4th through 7th grade school, and toured the building with the superintendent, with the principal, had a meeting afterwards with our principal, Dr. Remka, who will be running, if it is approved, the 4th through 7th grade model. And they did share a lot of the highlights and a lot of the successes. We looked at the operations and how the building was separated, and where the kids were assigned, and the different opportunities to bring together and bridge that elementary and middle model. And so I think it's a really great opportunity. I think we've spent a lot of time talking about the worries, and that makes sense. That's kind of what we do as parents and educators. But I do think there's an opportunity here to do something creative and different, and look at how do we tackle a grade span that traditionally, you know, even back to, you know, to my colleague at church, who's, you know, in her 70s, and her own kids didn't have a great experience, you know, back in the day. But I just share that as to say that, you know, I think there's an opportunity here that we're not talking about, that we should be. And so I hope that as we're going through our discussion tonight, we're keeping that in mind, not just for the 4th through 7th grade, but looking at that high school model and expanding it to grade 8. Our 8th graders are already very, very involved in our high school through the grade 8 academy, through athletics, through music, through drama. And frankly, the majority of the academy kids, they start the day at the high school, they don't want to leave. And I get the sense that once we bring together those two communities, it's just going to lead to even better things for BMR. So I wanted to share those as some really important pieces to the work that we haven't really spent too much time talking about.
So we just want to take a step back quickly and just remind everyone of kind of where this discussion all started. It was back in school year 2223, was when we had our initial discussion or began our initial talks about rightsizing the district. And in December of '22 is when we actually sent out our first survey to families. At that time, I think we had, what's 433 responses to that. And if you look there, it's going to tell you that at that point, our model was the pre-K through 2, the 3 through 7, and the 8 through 12. And we had about close to 59% agreeing with the proposed model at that time, and I think about 66.5 said that it was very clear. Then we had a little bit of a pause. We were on our reconfiguration discussions, because we were moving forward with our work with the Mass School Building Authority, and then we started up our discussions again this year. So we started with, we actually had a public meeting back on February 7th. It was in-person, but we also had virtual viewing for that, which we followed up by another survey to all of our families and staff. And you'll notice here that we received approximately 407 responses, with the majority coming from our parents, you can see there. And I, you know, took a look at the presentation from previous and the survey now, and back in '22, again, it was a little over 66% that understood the need for the consolidation. And with this recent survey and the information that was shared, it's around 77. And does this new model make sense? Remember, previous, it was our pre-K through 2, our 3 through 7, and our 8 through 12. This one, we are looking at a little bit of a different model, which is our pre-K through 4, uh, pre-K through 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, then our 8 through 12. After the survey, we got all the information in, we gathered the data, we had all the questions, and we had another virtual meeting, I think it was on February 28th. We had a lot of people tune into that one. Also, just so you know, all of our videos are definitely available on our YouTube channel if anyone needs to watch that. And since that time, we've also had the opportunity to have several staff meetings, at least four staff meetings, and respond to multiple emails from not only staff, family, but and community members.
So some of the additional feedback that we had from families and staff when we surveyed them both times, and there literally were pages and pages of questions and comments and suggestions and things. And so as far as the grade reconfiguration, and I should mention, if you were able to tune into the meeting on February 28th, we addressed the questions there. We wanted to make sure that our community had an opportunity to have all of those questions answered. But as far as other models, these were other things that were suggested, so we did share this before, but I wanted to bring it back up. There was a suggestion about developing one big pre-K through 12th grade school. There was a suggestion to have a pre-K through 4th grade, a 5 through 8, and a 9 through 12. There was another thought around having one preschool through 8th grade, and then one 9 through 12. And then we had over 25 suggested suggestions that were all the same, which is the model we ended up moving forward with, which was the preschool through grade 3, the 4 through 7, and the 8 through 12. And so moving forward with that model, you can see what the enrollment will look like next year as far as, and again, this is our rolled-up enrollment, so this is looking at all of our students next year and where they will be placed. If this model is approved this evening, you can see that in our preschool through grade 3 will have 480 students, our grades 4 through 7 will have 495, and then the high school 8 through 12 will have 530. It is important to note, though, that enrollment changes all the time. We had 12 new enrollments this week. And so it happens, like, you know, there's an ebb and flow, people move and move in and out of the system on a regular basis. But we are still maintaining our enrollment where it is currently, around 1,500. And I think this was around 1,505, and we toggle between that and 1,515. So this is the suggested model moving forward. Let's talk about the impact on staffing. This has been a really important issue that has come up, and should, frankly. It's an important one for all of us. As the community is aware, we've had a lot of conversations around the budgetary impact of being able to consolidate and reconfigure the grades. And that's a hugely important issue, and it's one of our areas of our why now, why we're focusing on this at this time. But through the consolidation, we've been able to reduce our staff count by about 17 and 1/2 staff. And so I want to be clear about what those are, because there's all kinds of chatter whipping around different places about what that number is and what the class sizes will be. We're going to bust all of those myths and misconceptions and all the disinformation right here, right now. So what the actual count is, we have five classroom content teachers that will be, you know, as a result of this, that will be reducing our budget by. So I want to be clear what I mean by that. I'm talking about homeroom teachers, teachers of very specific content at the secondary level, you know, team teachers that have, you know, 100, 110 kids rotating through their team or through their department. So those are kind of the general ed teachers that traditional, when we think about a teacher, that's typically what we think about, right? The teacher that's standing in front of his or her, you know, 25 students running their classroom. So we actually will have five reductions in those positions. We're going to have additional reductions of five, and what we're referring to is non-homeroom, non-content teachers. So these are like the teachers that are supporting, not special education, not ESL, but these are teachers that are supporting other teachers in the classroom, or they're intervention teachers. These are different positions. They're not standing in front of kids assigned to a homeroom with those kids all day. These are more of that support staff. In addition, we will have five support personnel staff. These are the, you know, and in prior presentations, we've looked at these, these are custodians, you know, the administrative assistants, these are more of the support positions. We'll have an administrator, and we'll have 1 and 1/2 of our health staff. So I want to be, make sure that we're being really clear about this, because I know that this is an issue that has gotten a lot of traction recently, and there's been a significant amount of misinformation and disinformation around. So now let's talk about class size, because I know that's something else equally that has had a lot of airtime. And again, it should, it's an important, it's an important issue. So as a result of the impacts of the reductions that we just looked at, this is what the impact will be on class size. And I am going to read these into the record, so to speak. I think it's important that these are shared, particularly if anyone's tuning in at home and they're not actually seeing the slide, but they're just hearing the presentation. Our preschool currently, there will be no changes. We have three teachers, we have 80 to 90 students, and there tends to be, given the number of sessions, the AM/PM session, about 15 students in each one of those sessions. There's no changes there. Kindergarten, there's no changes. We are looking at about 100 to 110 students for our five teachers. Class sizes will remain between 20 and 22. Similarly, for first grade, and again, these numbers are all rolled up, so these first grade numbers are the current kindergarten kids. We'll have five teachers, about 20 to 21 students. Second grade, we currently have four teachers in second grade. Next year, we'll have 97 second graders, we'll have about 24, 25 students. Third grade, four teachers, we've got 83 students that will be moving up, so the class size there will be about 20 to 21. Fourth grade, we'll have five teachers, 116 students, about 23 to 24. Fifth grade, five teachers, about 120 students, we'll have classes of about 24. Sixth grade, and this is important to mention, because you might be looking at the sixth grade and thinking, how do you have six teachers in sixth grade? Or similarly with six teachers in seventh grade. There will be one full team of sixth grade, one full team of seventh grade, and then there will be a split team of half-sixth graders, half-seventh graders. So the sixth graders will be together, the seventh graders will be together, and you'll have two teachers that will be teaching the sixth graders at once, math and science, say, two doing English and history, and then they will switch. We've had this for years at the middle school, but it's traditionally been a seventh and eighth grade split team. Next year, it'll be a sixth and seventh grade split team. For the high school, it's a little bit different, so I would ask everybody to look at this and kind of take it with a grain of salt, because as you know, the high school has multiple different sections of courses in each one of the content areas, different levels, AP classes. But overall, we'll have six English teachers, five math, five science, five social studies, in a total of about 530 kids. Your average class will be around 25. But in most cases, you'll have sections that are much smaller, because some of the classes are very much tailored, depending upon the level that the student is registered for, whether it's an advanced placement course or a college prep course. But on average, your classes will be around 25. And then just our next steps. We're going to continue to work with our staff around all the assignments, should this get approved this evening, finalize schedules and academic programming, coordinate all of our transportation. We are looking at a third run. This was an issue that came up and was discussed at a couple of different meetings. We are looking at having our high school, so 8 through 12, running on the time, give or take five minutes that it's on now. The elementary school, okay, so the preschool through 3rd grade, running on the time that they're running on now, give or take five minutes. But what folks may not necessarily be aware of is there's actually about a 30 to 40-minute window in between those bus times now, where the buses are just sitting. So we actually have the time already built in to put another run in, and that other run would be the 4th through 7th grade students, in which we would assign the seats, 4th graders, you know, in the front, 7th graders in the back, just again, to allay any concerns that families might have. But we're going to continue working on that and coordinating our transportation with those runs. We're going to establish our moving dates. We're going to do quite a few different, present quite a few different opportunities for staff and families to get into the buildings, to see the buildings, to tour the buildings throughout the spring, bringing the staff together to actually start doing some more work, some more training, some more relationship building, and really helping to establish that new school culture that we'll be having in each of the buildings. Planning celebrations for kids that are moving, that's really important. And so we're going to be very thoughtful about making sure that if this does move forward, that we're having celebrations for the grades that will be moving forward, and that will be their last year in their current building. And then, of course, working out all the details on extracurriculars. There've been a lot of questions around our National Junior Honor Society, that's the NJHS, some of the other clubs, our athletics, and our after-school 21st Century Learning Centers program. So lots of planning still to do, but those will be the next steps if we're able to move forward. So I will pause here.
All right, so moving forward with the public hearing for grade reconfiguration. Next on the public hearing is public comment. So I do ask if you want to address the committee. I do need you to come up to the table. For viewers at home, the microphone is here. Please state your name, the town you live in. And just remember that what you're sharing with, we are going to make a vote on this this evening, so it can be impactful. So it is important that we hear from the communities positive and negative. So if there's anyone that would like to ask, you know, further questions or share some comments, this is the time for that.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Rounds. I am the president of the Unit A Educators Association. I'm here just to publicly express the concern about cutting nursing staff. We understand the need to keep teachers in front of the children, but we're concerned about the safety of the children. And it's not just Karen Young, high school nurse, nurse leader, and myself speaking out, it's, this is the entire Unit A. We're speaking on behalf of 140-something people, so, who work with the children daily. We know you're in a budget crisis. We have seen the numbers, I've been through it through several meetings with Jason, so I understand it. We think it's in the best interest of the students to keep at least one more nursing And there are several reasons. One is acuity and safety. With cutting nursing staff, that's going to increase the number of nurses per student, I'm sorry, increase the number of students per nurse, but there are still the same number of students in the building, same number, you know, per, it's just, it's a lot. The office visits aren't going to decrease just because we have less staff. As of now, there are no nursing subs. It's hard to get subs for anything, for classrooms and for nursing. It's especially hard for nurses because of the rate they can make working in a doctor's office in a hospital, in an emergency situation, emergency rooms, what have you. And public school districts just can't afford to compete with that, and that's realistic. So if there's a nurse out, that's an entire building without a nurse, and it's just not feasible to share a nurse between two buildings on those days. The other thing is that subs need to be licensed, RNs or LPNs. There is also a greater potential for mistakes due to the increased volume, especially during lunchtime where there's medication administration and potential recess injuries. There are, especially at the middle school level, a great number of medication visits, so that's something that really needs to be considered. The injury visits may be considerably longer, younger kids may need more care, more time. You know, they can get kind of upset, so spending more time with them is key. There are mandated screenings that nurses can't be available for emergency visits, ill visits, what have you. They have to be doing those screenings, and there's just no subs to cover that. So if there was a fourth, fourth and a half nurse in the district that would be able to be flexible to cover those. There's also time needed to be able to communicate with families, so we're talking about, so let me just take a quick look at the numbers. Approximately 2,811 visits for pre-K through 3 right now, from start of the school year to now, so year-to-date, and that doesn't include the med visits, which are 111. So if there was no nurse in that building, that's almost 3,000 visits that aren't getting met. At the middle school, there were 4,000, so, sorry, 4 through 7, we broke this up by the new configuration. 4 through 7, there were 4,107 visits from August to today. That's 1,411 med visits, so over 5,000 visits to the nurse's office. And then at the high school, there were, so 8 through 12, or 8 through 12 plus, because we do have our 18 to 22-year-old program at the high school, 3,176 visits and 807 medication visits. So imagine what it looks like at lunchtime, when kids are coming in to get their insulin, their ADHD meds, you know, their midday meds. And that doesn't include, at lunchtime, the nurses need to take their contractual lunch. I mean, these are people they need to eat too, you know? So there's nobody there to cover those lunches, to cover them having lunch. And then there's, you know, time needed in the day to be able to reach out to parents, to make phone calls, to send emails, to follow up on, like, I can't tell you how many times I've emailed Karen about different protocols for different students, and she has to find the information, look it up, and then respond to me and the families, and make the phone calls to the families and the physicians, and that takes a lot of time. And then there's mental health visits, students who have somatic issues, and students who are incontinent, who are going to need changes and being cleaned up and helped. And then the non-medical visits, you know, young teenage girls who are just starting their menstrual cycles, or kids with braces, or other various things like that. So there's a lot that happens in a nurse's day, and not a lot of time to do it in, and the kids are going to be the ones who suffer, and in some cases, there are going to be safety concerns. Can you speak to the incident that happened today?
So at the complex today, the nurse between the start of the day and 11:30 saw 24 students for urgent or emergent reasons, had to turn away other students that were non-emergent. And that's not even including any communication with those families. And that's not even including any communication with those families. So that's, that's a lot to do.
And we do really understand the budget and the, you know, that the cuts, we get it, but this is a safety concern. So we thought we needed to bring it to your attention, to the attention of the public.
I agree, it's great information. So right now, there are two full-time nurses in the complex, one for MES side, one for AFM side, correct?
Correct.
One.
And then, and then a half position, so there's two and a half.
There's two and a half.
Yes.
For all the little kids, so, and it's about 700.
About 750, yep.
And then here.
There's one for six to eight. And then I'm at the high school with the nine to 12.
So the proposal has one at each school. The DPH recommended, I believe it was DPH recommended, one to 500.
Minimum.
So.
Right, minimum of one.
Yeah, one to 500, yep. We could have as many nurses as we want to have, but the recommendation was one to
Which we did during COVID when we needed those extra hands.
Yep.
So as those of us, or at least half of us that are on the ground working with the kids, the nursing staff who are dealing with all these medical things, we'd like to ask that you keep at least one more. If you could keep all the one and a half, we would absolutely be thrilled, but at least one more. Someone who, like, if you look at the numbers, the four to seven is going to be the heaviest-hit group, so maybe keeping two at this building and then having that second person be the floater to cover for others. However it needs to work, we just, we're concerned about the safety of the students.
Very good information.
I have a question.
Of course.
You mentioned with the reduction of one and a half, there would be, and that there's no subs. How does that work now, though? Because if we have one assigned per building and one calls out sick, where, where is the sub coming in for that?
Right now, we, we do have a couple of subs. One is going to be retiring at the end of the school year, and the other will be seeking a full-time position at some point. I, I'm not sure how much longer we're going to have her.
So that one and a half doesn't include, like, subbing needs?
No, no. And then if we have to, we'll pull the half nurse to cover a building, so at least there's partial coverage for a day.
So right now, for our student population, there are four and a half nurses. Our student population isn't changing. Why, why would we cut one and a half nursing staff?
We have less sites. We're consolidating, we're getting in line with the other districts around us and following DPH guidelines. I, you know, I met with Lisa and Karen, and I completely hear you, and the safety of our kids are the top priority. I think everybody knows that, for all of us. One of the things I shared is we keep watching the revenues, you know, as the budget works through the legislative process. I also encourage Karen to do some grant writing. You know, as the lead nurse, she should definitely be looking at grant opportunities to try to fund some of these things, so that it doesn't just fall on, you know, on the town assessments and on, you know, state revenues. So, and we're committed to helping with that too, of course. So I don't think this conversation needs to end here, but I, you know.
Right now, it's just what is proposed, and this can still evolve for staffing.
Staffing, yeah.
Right. I think it's great information, so, and I agree with you, the student population isn't changing, so. And I've always said safety is a huge priority, so. I appreciate that information. Any other parts of the staffing that you wanted to talk about?
This was the only thing that is a major concern. While we don't love losing any of our staff.
Never do.
We, we, we understand it and are working very closely with Jason and Jill to work through with our staff and to, you know, make it as smooth a transmission, transition as we absolutely possibly can, but this was the thing that was the major, like, red flag. So.
Well, I thank you for coming and bringing it up for us. We do have many, like I said, many discussions to come. I personally think that it's going to be on the top of a list, so we will keep you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
If I could just follow up with, so currently, it'll be one nurse in each building. That's the proposed.
Sure, yep.
And it's more of like a budget thing.
This is, so it's going to be, right. We're not.
And you're, and you're asking for, you're hopeful to keep one more?
Yes.
Correct.
At least.
And so with the reconfiguration proposal is like 480, 495, and 530, so in the three buildings. So I'm just curious of where that one more, would, would that be something that would be floating around, like a?
So when we looked at the numbers based on the visits, the total number of visits, including med visits at the elementary, so pre-K through three, is 2,922. And I'm going to math on the fly here, so I apologize if I get it wrong. The middle, four through seven, is 5,517. And the high school is approximately three. Sorry, I'm, I'm not, I'm.
About 4,000.
Yeah, it's about 4,000, give or take. So the, the middle four through seven is the, the school that has the most frequent, those four through seven, most frequent visits, so we feel like that would be a good home base for that fourth person. And then if people have to be out for, you know, illness or training, or, you know, need a half an hour in their day to have lunch, that, that person could float, you know, or even, you know, if there's a, there's a screenings that need to happen.
Or a medical emergency.
Or a medical emergency, and we have.
Those happen.
Yeah, and there are times when, you know, I can't tell you how many times we've had an ambulance to the high school this year, and the, the office is unmanned because Karen is at the emergency, dealing with that, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to say.
Well, I'll let you have your, but from us to them.
Part of the nursing staff.
Okay. If you want to join them, that would be, I just need you to introduce.
I'm a 0.5 nurse. I work out of the complex. I've been there for, I guess, 10 years, but really five, because I'm 0.5. So I also want to know that we do care for the staff as well. Like, when staff has injuries, illnesses, we see a lot of staff, we do a lot of education. In fact, today, one of the issues that Karen read about earlier with the nurse that was there before I came in was a staff issue. She had to go out and have sutures. She was in a, you know, had an accident report and all that because of an injury in the kitchen and had to go up with sutures. The same nurse had to stay last week for a teacher's health emergency and didn't even leave till 5:15 last week, so. You know, it's those kind of things. It seems like a lot of things happen at the very end of the day and, you know, or the first thing in the morning sometimes, soon as the buses, sounds like that's the kind of day that, it started at the complex with issues coming right off the bus and, you know, just.
We definitely appreciate.
I mean, I've been here for a long time, and, you know, we were seeing 60 to sometimes up to 100 kids in a day, mostly being around recess, injury time.
And like I said, safety is super important to us, so we appreciate it. I think, like I said, this, right now, we're going to, going to continue with our grade reconfiguration. These are recommendations that do kind of coincide with our budget, so future conversations to come, but appreciate your time.
And we will organize all our data and email it to all of you so that you have it for those future conversations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any, anyone else with any public comment for grade reconfiguration?
Hello.
Hi.
Valerie Hagerty, Millville.
Introduced yourself. Nice to see you, Valerie.
Nice to see you, Erin. I do have a few questions. One of the questions that I have is what is the capacity at MES right now for the students?
At the building?
At the building.
Oh, okay.
It was built for just under 500.
Okay. And what's the capacity at the complex?
About 795.
Could you, so when you were looking at these grade configurations, one of the things that my husband kind of pointed out to me, eighth grade, they're either 12 or 13, and they'll be going into a high school situation with up to 17, 18-year-olds, maybe a little bit older if they, if some students had stayed back. So that seems like a big age gap for, to have together, and not really knowing a lot about how that high school situation is going to work. Now, you've said that there's some eighth graders that are enjoying this eighth-grade academy, but not knowing what that academy is happening. I thought they were going up for Spanish. They might be doing more than just Spanish class, but I don't know what that school day does. They get bused, is it, do they go there first? Do they only stay for part of the day? Have they gone through a lunch situation? Are they in any classes with older, maybe juniors, seniors? How do you, are they going to be kind of kept more separate? You said that the classes, when you put all the grades together, 530, you said so many teachers. Well, how do you determine how those kids go in there? Are they going to be more with freshmen and sophomores, eighth graders, freshmen, sophomores, rather than eighth graders, juniors, seniors, or what's that going to look like?
Those are great questions. So the, the majority of their core classes will be with, with their eighth-grade peers and the eighth-grade teachers that will be going up, you know, with them. I say the majority because there are some that will be ready to take advanced coursework, that can go into those advanced courses, similar to the Grade Eight Academy now.
So how do the kids go into those advanced courses? How do, how, how do those kids make that determination that they might be able to go into that?
There'll be a whole process in place for parents and students to be able to determine that with the high school administration. So we have a process now for our Grade Eight Academy. I don't know that it will be the same. I don't get the sense that it will be exactly the same because it's a different model. But we want to make sure that we give eighth graders, those that are ready, the opportunity to take advanced coursework.
Okay, how will lunch work? Are they going to be mainly with the eighth graders? Or are they going to be, is it whoever, I don't know, how do, how does lunch work right now at the high school?
They're running three lunches right now, and I believe the plan is to run three lunches for next year as well.
And how do, so, I know at a different school, they run it where it's, I think they only run two lunches, and that they, with the way that they run it, sophomores and seniors, freshmen and juniors. Is that somewhat of what you're doing? Or is it, okay, these classes, this is what we're going to send over there?
I, I don't know that it runs that way now. I think it runs by, by teacher. I think there's three lunch periods and one of the, that's built into one of the periods, and I think you are assigned an A, B, or C lunch.
I think it's different every day.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I think it rotates.
Based on their class rotating schedule.
Okay.
So it isn't as, as defined as all the freshmen eat at, it's not like that.
Okay, okay. And then how does it look? So I did one tour of the high school, and you have a first floor and a second floor. Are all the classes interspersed, or are they going to be maybe their core classes located on one floor, where they might have to go up to up, the upper floor for special-type classes?
Exactly what you just explained, yeah. So the eighth grade, the way that I'm understanding is the eighth grade, the bulk of them, will be in one place.
Okay.
For their core classes, but for their enrichment, they'll, you know, they'll be moving around the building.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just want to point out what you're, the eighth through 12th grade, I think the best example we can give you is band. And there are already, I would say, half of the seventh and eighth graders are already integrated into our high school marching band. They already work together for almost six months a year. So some of these kids are, and sports, but the bigger number is, I, I believe our marching band now is made up of, you know, the percentage is a higher group of younger kids. They're not going to walk in there and not know the faces. They're going to have friendly faces from, from band and from other sports, probably even from within the town. So, and I think that's a continuous cycle. Just, and, and the band has always been that configuration with the middle school kids going up for.
Can I just add something that might help too? They go to lunch with their class that they're leaving, correct?
Yes.
So they'll be with their peers too. So they, it's not like they're going to just go and be with, you know, they'll have peers with them that go to the same lunch.
Yeah, that, like that whole math class, if we will, we'll go to lunch together.
It's more too, whether or not, how much exposure are they going to have to upperclassmen? You know, it's like, you've got some kids, they're driving. You have disparities probably on the height and weight differences that they're not used to. I mean, between sixth and, seventh and eighth graders, there's some kids that do sprout really high, but they might not have the bulk of an 18-year-old. So it's just concerns, you just want them to be safe and stuff, and it's just kind of knowing a better how the day runs and.
Definitely.
I kind of look at it, it was just, just because of your numbers, it seems like with your numbers, you could almost do a five-through-eight configuration if you weren't going to try to use MES at some time in the future. You could handle it at the complex. The complex could do pre-K through fifth grade, or through, yeah, PK through fourth grade. Could be at the, at the complex, but not at any MES. And then you could do five-through-eight, which would be a nice, nicer number at the HartNet, and then do the nine-through-12. But just looking at the complex, if that's what you're trying to avoid, I can understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public?
Only if another parent wants to speak first.
Anyone? Oh, yes, someone's coming. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie. I live in Blackstone. I have two children who are in elementary school, one who's in kindergarten, and my daughter Penelope is in third grade. She has special services, she is deaf, and she has an IEP. My concern, my biggest concern is class size. I love her teacher, her teachers throughout preschool up has been wonderful, but to go from 18 or 19 kids to 24, 25 kids in a class is extremely distracting, it's not as conducive. I respect the educators, I respect everything that you guys do up here. It's a lot of work, and my biggest concern is the class size on both sides. We're increasing it substantially, in my opinion. The four-through-seven model, not really too happy about it. My concern is them on the bus. I went to a high school, seven through 12, and I understand the conversations that I had when I was in high school, from seventh grader listening to a 12th grader. The adolescence and the development social between a fourth and a seventh grader, they're on completely different, different tracks, different socially, just different. I don't know what the answer is. I wish I did. I wish we had more money to be able to make sure we're not increasing the class sizes. When my husband and I bought a house here, we didn't go to Bellingham because I didn't want the big class sizes. I didn't want that big-town feel, that's why we moved here. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So Jennifer Gill, Millville. I just wanted to give a couple updates on MES water. I'm sure you're all shocked, but you guys get more people at your meeting than we get at ours, so this is.
I just, I'm just going to say, I don't know if that, this is where we should do it, because we need to move to our motion to consider for grade configuration, possibly public forum of our meeting? Or do you feel that something fits in to reconfiguring?
Well, I wanted to get to the use of using the Millville Elementary School.
Point of order, that's been decided in the previous meeting, so.
You can, I think.
I would like to, if, if that's going to be talked about, maybe that's talked about in the general meeting rather than.
That would be seven o'clock.
Grade configuration, yeah.
I'm not trying to put it to the side, I'm just, I need to get through this because we had another open hearing, we were supposed to open at 6:30, so.
Okay.
But I'm not saying at a public forum.
Maybe I'll just.
We're not voting on placement right now, we're voting on what grade levels are going to be together next year.
Okay.
And we're not talking about space.
Okay.
Okay?
I will wait. Thank you.
All right. So with that being said, we're going to, uh, move to our conversation, um, and I'd be looking for a motion to consider and approve grade reconfiguration so we can open our discussion.
I motion to approve the grade reconfiguration model for school year twenty-four, twenty-five as presented.
Motion made by Carrie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara S. All right, so let's talk. I mean, um, we are over on time, but I mean, if there's anything pressing that, before we vote, I think that now is definitely the time to discuss.
I just want to go ahead and say it. Previous, when we had the discussion in twenty-twenty-two, I was staunchly against the three-through-seven, you know, model. For a lot of the reasons that the pa- the parents have tonight, where, you know, the maturity levels between, you know, a third grader and a seventh grader, and I still stand by that, and I probably wouldn't support it if that was the idea tonight. But this isn't a new idea. This is something that the district has been struggling with since, I mean, I don't know who was on the board at that time. I know, you know, it was a different superintendent at the time. I think it was twenty-eighteen, twenty-seventeen. But we weren't, we didn't have the ability to change the the model at that point because we didn't have the elementary schools in, um, the district as we do now. I think four-through-seventh is palatable at this point, and we're able to, you know, it, they're not as far off, and I appreciate the, you know, separating on the buses and all that kind of stuff. Um, I still have concerns, again, you know, with the maturity levels. But I think we should all know that the leadership that we have in place in the schools, I think is the right leadership that we have. Uh, especially with Dr. Remka taking over, uh, in the middle school, or in, in, in this school, uh, how it's going to be. So, that's what I want to say. It's not a now problem. This has been a problem in this, in these two towns for almost ten years. So I think it's something that we should consider.
Anyone else? Well, I'll piggyback what Matt just said. It's the emotions I've been going through in this, these quick three months since we de- decided to even try to conquer this for, for this year, for this coming school year, is, we knew this is, is a need. It's necessary. And every time we stepped up and said, oh, we better talk about this, something else stopped us. Um, it feels like it's happening really fast, but I, I've known it's a need for a long time. I agree with the leadership com- comment that, you know, it, just from the top down, having Dr. DeFalco here to reconfigure this and get it, um, set and into motion. I, I can't think of anyone else that we could have relied on to do it and do it right. Um, I think just like the regional agreement change, moving the elementary kids a year into it, felt like it was always, it was always working that way, or, you know, and it had never. And I think we'll be there a year from now. So with that being said, a motion was made for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Are we only considering this for a year, or are we, um, amending the original agreement?
Yeah, no. We're not doing it just for one school year though, right?
Right, because then, then we'd have to talk about this again. So we might need to amend our motion if that is the direction the committee wants to go in to just, you know, we do have a feasibility study out there. We, you know, we know that's coming, and that would be a separate. But is this where we want to be until that recommendation? I, I'm asking. I'm not, Dan?
I just, I was gonna ask for some, just some, a little bit of clarification on the motion, and so this is essentially moving the existing fourth graders uh, from the elementary school to the middle school and the exist. Sorry, fourth and fifth, and then the seventh, uh, the eighth graders to the, to the high school. And I just want, yeah, so, well, because we, we can't, so this wouldn't be an amendment, um, right now to the, to the agreement. Well, this is part of the agreement, so this is, it's just changing the configuration. Just want to make sure, well, so we're not, yeah, so this is the configuration, but it's not locking, I want to make it clear that it's not locking the complex as the.
No, we're not even talking about building.
Yeah, no, I understand. Well, we are, because we're, the, that's currently the building that they're in, so I just wanted to make that clear in the discussion that this doesn't locking, lock in permanently the complex as the elementary school. I, I suppose I'm making a clarity that other than.
You're clarifying?
Yeah.
Erin, I would then probably amend my motion to say the reconfiguration model beginning with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay. So motion made amended by Carrie, um, to approve the grade reconfiguration model beginning school year twenty-four, twenty-five as presented. So as presented is pre-K to three, four to seven, and eight through twelve. Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
So amended motion by Carrie, second by Tara S. Any other discussion or, um, comment to, before we move to a vote? All right. So all those in favor of approving the grade reconfiguration model to begin in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So it is a unanimous vote. And I will call to adjourn our public hearing for grade reconfiguration. Thank you. Motion made by Tara. Um, and now I'm going to open our public hearing for the FY twenty-five budget. Um, we're actually just moving into opening the meeting. So I will open the public hearing for the, um, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five budget. And I think we'll just introduce ourselves again for formality, but we're not going to.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Chuck Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Erin Vannaco, Millville.
Dan Keefe, Blackstone.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Ted Novio, Millville.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Well, all eyes are on you, Jill.
Jill, Phil Galanias is the Superintendent Director of Students.
Thank you. All right. So same format. We're going to have a, a short presentation of the twenty-five budget. As has been talked about, we have had a joint meeting with both towns, and, um, we'll be moving to public comment and then motion to consider by the committee. And if it's you presenting?
Yes. Thank you. And if, um, Tim, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the budget? Slide deck, that'd be great. Uh, no, I, I had resented today, but that's okay. I'll send it again. Sorry, bear with me one second. While I'm doing this, I'd like to point out that our new finance director is sitting in the audience, and he will be doing this presentation next year, so welcome, Joe.
Thank you for spending the night with us.
No problem. I'm sending it as we speak.
Oh, I thought you were.
Yeah, no, it's okay. Yeah. Just sent it along there. There you go. I love technology when it works. So those, um, those of you who have been, who have had the opportunity to tune into any of our budget work, and we spent a lot of time, as you know, on this, uh, dating back to November, this information, I'm gonna move through fairly quickly because we've been through it, uh, multiple times. So, I do want to make sure to, um, to share with those that haven't seen it, of course, uh, prior to now. But for those that have, just bear with me as we, as we continue to move through, um, the material tonight. Again, as Jill mentioned in our last discussion, um, everything leaks back to our district improvement strategy. This is really the, kind of the why and the how of the work, and our fiscal plan needs to match our instructional plan. And so, um, I, I really want to highlight that because, uh, each year we ensure that the dollars in our budget are connected back to, um, the goals and the focus of our strategic plan. That's a top guiding structure for our budget development. So there are some key documents that we use to help us put our budget together. Clearly, our blueprint is the first. Um, we get, uh, annual feedback, uh, and student performance through, uh, the Massachusetts Department of Education, through our MCAS, which is our student, um, achievement and growth numbers. Uh, I know folks are really familiar with MCAS. And also the accountability results. That's kind of the second side. The Department of Education determines how the school district is doing based on a variety of measures. The student achievement and student growth factor that's included in MCAS is one of those measures, but there are other measures that are included in that overall accountability ranking as well. Um, our school committee, uh, feedback through my evaluation, um, and it's, it's tethered to my evaluation, uh, clearly, as it should be, but uh, the goals that I have each year are our district goals. Um, and so that feedback's critically important to, to give us an overall indicator of where we need to be putting our focus as we move forward. Um, and last but certainly not least, our surveys. Um, so do our families in the audience and our families and students, students in the audience too, uh, and students and families at home tuning in. Uh, we take that feedback very seriously, and we include that, uh, in the work that we do as we move ahead, setting new goals for the next year. So all of this is important because this is what drives the budget. The other side of that equation, of course, is our student enrollment, and so, um, it's important to know who are the children in our seats. Uh, so at the time of our enrollment snapshot here, um, we had about fifteen-hundred-and-thirteen students, or one thousand five-hundred-and-thirteen. Um, you can see the demographic breakdown, uh, by race. You can see our overall number of English language learners. So these are the students, those are the students who are getting English language learner services. Um, so not only are they sitting in class, but they're actually learning the English language from an, um, an ELL or English language learner instructor. So they're actually acquiring English as another language. Uh, but that's different, not to be confused with first language, not English. We have a lot of students, uh, who have left or exited our program. They've mastered the language. They're able to exit. Uh, so we have about eight percent of our students say English is not their first language. Uh, but they don't qualify for, um, ELL services. Of course, our students with special needs. Uh, so those are our, our friends that are on our, um, IEPs or Individual Education, uh, Program uh, plans, and then we have our students who are high needs, which are students who are, um, uh, low-income and/or ELL and/or special education. So that's about half our student population, just to give everybody a sense. Uh, I always think of this slide as our return on investment slide, so how are we doing, uh, with the resources that we have? Um, and again, I won't read through all of these. There's a ton of data here, and, uh, I mean, I know, looking around in the audience, I know many of you have seen this already. If you haven't attended one of, uh, these meetings, you probably saw this and in, uh, subsequent email when our data came out. I'm big on sharing, uh, with the community how we're performing. I think that's really important. We look at the good. We look at the progress that needs to be made, and we look at everything in between. Uh, and speaking of progress, the Department of Education, uh, has deemed the district as making adequate or moderate progress towards our goals. And that is the actual title that is used. So we are making gains, uh, which is great to see. None of our schools require any assistance from the Department of Education, uh, nor have we, uh, nor should we, frankly. Um, our graduation rate is strong, just over ninety percent. Our drop rate is around one-point-seven percent. Both of those are, uh, above state average in the good way, uh, meaning our graduation rate is above the state average, uh, and our drop rate is below the state average. Um, you can see our MCAS scores, uh, grades three-to-five, uh, ELA, grades three-to-five math. Uh, grades five and eight are the only two grades that were tested in, uh, science specifically, although there is a science exam, um, at the high school that we've been transitioning through the last couple of years with biology. And then you can see some of the additional, um, state measures as it relates to our accountability ranking, particularly around attendance and students involved in advanced coursework. Those are actually two indicators that we are, uh, weighted on, uh, from the Department of Education in terms of how we're doing. So, uh, we are making tremendous progress in our attendance, uh, which is great. It may not sound like, uh, you know, a, a big challenge, but uh, for most school systems across the Commonwealth after COVID, post-COVID, um, it's been a significant challenge. So we're pleased. Our kids are showing up. They're ready to learn. Uh, and as you can tell, uh, by this, uh, indicator underneath, we have many of them enrolled in rigorous coursework. Those are advanced placement classes, of which seventy-five percent of our students are getting passing rate or college credit for that. Uh, so a big shout-out to the work that's happening across our schools. Yes, there's work to be done, particularly in the area of mathematics, uh, the area of science. Um, we're in the process now, you'll hear tonight, of selecting a new science program. Having the right core materials in front of our students and staff is a big focus, um, of our leadership team and has been a big focus of our school committee, which I'm very grateful for. So additionally, what's driving the budget? Um, so we talked about our student population. We talked about our blueprint. We're in our third year uh, of our current strategic plan, about half of our students being classified as, as, um, high needs. And I only mention that because that brings along with it a different level of service and support. Again, looking at the grade configuration or reconfiguration, so, um, I'm grateful we were able to move forward with that, uh, this evening. You know, we remain focused on minimizing those non-academic barriers. Those are the things that can prevent kids from getting to school, like attendance and all the challenges that can come with that, um, and that can get in the way of their learning. And so we remain focused on those areas while looking at, uh, selecting a new science curriculum, uh, K-through-twelve. There'll be a recommendation brought forward to the school committee from our science curriculum committee that Mary Colonino, our lead coach, has been, uh, spearheading um, in April. So we'll have some, uh, further discussion on the, the what of that program, uh, very soon. And then, of course, uh, one of the things that we have heard repeatedly from our school community, uh, and we know this, is working very intentionally to engage particularly our sixth-through-twelfth grade students in more athletics, more music-drama opportunities, more extracurricular opportunities, uh, through clubs and, and, um, and internships. So, um, we have, um, been very focused on that as well when we've been putting together the FY twenty-five budget. Other things, uh, that are really important to just keep in mind that are driving, um, the development of our budget and what we're gonna see for numbers this evening, health insurance costs. Um, we did get our health insurance increase, um, it was about seven-and-a-half percent, um, which is high. But, uh, we remain hopeful that in the, in the future years, that will come down, of course. Um, private school and collaborative, uh, special education collaborative tuition increases, facilities needs, our contractual obligations. Um, the minimum local contribution, that's the number that is assigned by the state to each of the towns, uh, that they are required to pay their school system, so we'll talk about that in a moment. We'll actually see what that is. Our utility costs, I'm sure, uh, many of you have the sticker shock every month. I get mine around the fifteenth of the month when I open my bill, uh, for my gas and electricity, and it's a staggering number. Um, so that, uh, we are not immune to that on the school side. As a matter of fact, we have worked very hard to try to uh, kind of spread out our utility costs across different vendors and, and different, uh, venues. So, uh, you know, looking at, uh, regular, you know, national grid electricity, uh, as a provider, but also solar. Uh, we have about four different vendors that we've been working with and in, in an energy broker to help us get our, uh, utility costs down for our communities. And then, of course, we'll talk in a, in a bit, just a little bit about our loss in state and federal funding. Um, and so budget reduction. just a little bit about our loss in state and federal funding. And so, budget reductions, right? So, all of those drivers, all of those needs lead to the actual leadership team coming together and putting together a budget. And so, I wanted to just highlight briefly kind of where this process started before we look at where we ended. So, when we started this process in November, I kind of call it the all-in budget, that everything that everybody needed, all of the positions that we have now, plus all the additional things that were asked for, the materials, supplies, resources, all of the early estimates on our utilities and all of our expenses, our budget initially came in at 30.3 million, or what would be an increase of 25% to our communities. Nobody finds that in any way reasonable, not, and I'm sure in the audience, not in those tuning in at home, not in the school committee, nor in the leadership team. So, we've spent the past few months really working to see, how can we get the protections we need around insulating the programs for students? And I do want to mention that the budget we're going to present tonight does not cut any programming for kids, none of it. So, our friends and families and the audience and those tuning in at home, this does not have a reduction in programming for kids. We worked really hard to make sure to preserve, to preserve that for the student experience. But with that being said, we knew we could not bring forward a budget of 30.3 million. So, the number just under that, the 27.9, we use that as kind of a bellwether because that would be a budget that we would call level funded, which means we get the same number, the same dollars, in this upcoming fiscal year that we have currently, right now in FY '24. And so, that would still look like just over an 8% to both of our towns. You might be wondering, how is that possible? How is it you're getting the same dollars? It's the same budget, but it's an 8% increase. Shouldn't it be a 0% increase? That's a good question. It's a fair question, but the answer is no. That is because we have seen a significant loss of revenue, and that is the state and federal funding streams that I mentioned here. We don't have a budget problem. We have a revenue problem, which leads to a budget problem. And so, that leads to our third bullet underneath, which was the need for reductions. And so, as we just looked at with the grade reconfiguration, we had put forth, excuse me, a set of recommended reductions of about $1.5 million in staff, or about 17 and 1/2 positions, and approximately $1 million in supplies, materials, and resources. So, that total reduction is about a $2.5 million reduction. So, what does that lead to? It leads to us this evening looking at a draft budget for FY '25 of $27,829,275.43. If you look just below, you will see what the operating budget for FY '24 is. That's the current school year that we're in, the fiscal year that we're in, of $27,979,934.14. I want to make sure I'm clear about this. For those that are just tuning in for maybe the first time, you'll see that it's delineated as the operating budget and not the total budget. That is because there are two numbers that are not included in this number that are included in the overall budget number for the school system. That is our charter school sending tuition, and then is our school choice sending tuition. Collectively, those two numbers come to about $2 million. So, when you look at the total budget, you would add $2 million on top of that. So, I just want to make sure that that's clear. We separate those out because we want the community to be able to see, like, this is what it actually costs to run the school system. The other two figures that I mentioned, the charter school tuition sending and the school choice tuition sending, that's money we have to pay out. I want to touch on the charter school piece for a moment because there's been some conversation recently in the community about the possible idea of that being a revenue source. That currently costs our school system, which is assessed to the towns, over $1 million. Having another charter school in our community would decimate our budget. It would be incredibly problematic for the residents because it costs a significant amount of money. We still have to pay a significant portion of that, of that funding. It is not, it is, charter schools are public, they're called public charter schools. They are free to families. They are not free to school systems. They are not free to taxpayers. I just want to make sure I'm very clear about that. So, overall, the operating budget for our school system in FY '25 has decreased by just over $150,000. So, we're actually coming in about 0.5% less as far as an operating budget than last year. However, I just want to remind everybody that we are also looking at a significant loss of revenue. So, in the governor's budget that was released, the district will be receiving approximately $130,000 less in our overall revenues than FY '24. You add to that the ESAR money, which is about $430,000. This is our last year of that. Those are the COVID dollars that we had. We used about another $380,000 in Circuit Breaker. That's special education grant funding that we used. And we used about $500,000 in excess and deficiency from the school system. So, all in, it's about a $1.4 million loss of revenue. On top of that, the state has increased what is required from both of the towns to pay for the education of the children in those communities. Blackstone's increased by about $544,000. Millville's increased by about $134,000. And so, you know, if you look at the italicized numbers and the little asterisk mark there, those were numbers, the 430 of ESAR, the 380,000 in Circuit Breaker, and the 500,000 of E&amp;D. Those were all numbers that we used to offset the assessments to the towns last year. So, while we have some of that, not the ESAR money, is nearly to the degree that we had in fiscal year '24 when putting the budget together. And the overall impact, and Tim, if you wouldn't mind just clicking that Google Doc into the school committee, it's actually in your packet. So, you'll see, these are the, this is essentially what the assessment looks like to the community. So, if you look at the top, you can see the school choice sending tuition and the charter school sending tuition. And you can see that the actual total budget is $29,857,833. You can see all of the offsets that we're using. Tim, do you mind just scrolling down a little bit? You can see the offsets that are listed there. A recommendation of about $100,000 of E&amp;D, trying to do some bulk purchasing this year with some of our supplies. You'll get a sense of what the state revenues are at Chapter 70, regional transportation, school choice receipts. That's the money we get in for kids at school choice into our school system. And the yellow highlights are just numbers that are estimates because we're still waiting on some of the additional numbers from the federal and state government. And if you scroll to the bottom, you will see additional revenues totaling about $469,000. Those are gate fees for athletics. They're user fees that we take in. I want to share just, I think, a point of clarity on the way that we do our budget here. There is not an ounce of revenue or an expenditure that you're not seeing here. And we do get cited from our auditors often because we put everything in. You see our grants. You see our gate fees. Technically, we're not supposed to be doing that. But we do because we want to show the communities how we're trying to offset every penny we can to minimize the assessment to the towns. And I just think it's an important piece to mention. Just under that, you'll see the actual percentage, the number of students from Blackstone and Millville. That's recalculated every year. So, the assessment of what's left in our budget, Blackstone pays for 74.3%, Millville 25.7%. That's based on just pure student enrollment. And then, if you scroll down to the bottom a little further, Tim, you'll see the overall increase to the assessment year over year. So, Blackstone's increase from last year is about 5.9%, and Millville's is about 5.5%. Tim, if you scroll over to the side a little bit, if you could show the highlighted numbers, just move that slide, Google sheet over just a couple clicks. A little further. Perfect. And then, you can see this is Millville's overall assessment is about $204,000 more than last year, and Blackstone's is about $672,000 more than last year. And you can see how it's broken down. Thank you, Tim. So, those are the overall impacts on the assessments. And that's after a $2.5 million in reductions in staff and supplies and resources. And again, I want to go back to the grade reconfiguration because that was a critical part in making sure that we could actually present a budget that is more palable to the, to the communities. And if we go back to our slide deck, next steps would be to continue to monitor state and federal funding. And I do, I do want to commit to Lisa Rounds, our Unit A president, just the importance of us doing that. We remain committed to that, particularly around, I know, some of the nursing concerns. Well, once the budget is certified, we'll create our FY '25 budget book. We'll start getting those distributed. We'll be meeting with our Boards of Selectmen and our finance subcommittees as we always do, and then, of course, the town meetings. So, I will pause here.
Thank you. I know that's a lot of information, not all new to everyone. So, moving on the public hearing for the budget, next is public comment through the budget. If there's anyone that would like to share comment, questions to the table, name and town or position. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Caruso, Millville Town Administrator and Chair of their Capital Planning Committee. Again, I appreciate all the effort that's gone into this. Tonight, you're certifying this budget, which picks a threshold above which you don't go. Doesn't necessarily mean you can't go below it. And I appreciate, you know, the multiple iterations that you've done. I am the budget meister for Millville, and last night, I sent to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, Millville's budget, okay? And the way we put it in is we put in a column that says what all the departments ask for, and then, we put in, I put in what my recommendation is to those boards, okay? And so, in my recommendation, I tried to follow the guidance letter. You have a budget process. You follow ours. We have a process which begins with a guidance memo that goes out to all the departments, including, you know, school leadership. And that guidance is determined, you know, with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. So, that's the Millville's guidance for the budget. Doesn't end up necessarily where we wind up, especially when it comes to your budget needs, okay? But when I do the budget with the guidance, it says 3% for, you know, various things, including BMR. If, when I put in the number that you're asking, so, with that guidance, what I showed them last night, just for discussion purposes, a deficit for Millville of 250 grand. When I, I'm sorry, 150 grand. When I put in your ask-for number, which is slightly changed, but approximately the same, it's another 100 grand. We're talking about 250 grand deficit for Millville. And it does not include, you know, numerous requests from other departments. For example, if I put in what the fire chief asked for, we'd be talking a huge number, okay? So, we're going to work that over a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know if he followed your guidance.
He did not follow my guidance, but what got in there is my guidance. So, it's a working, you know, it's a work in progress. It's a working document that the Finance Committee and the Boards of, Board of Selectmen will be working with. I just want to point that out because, you know, baked into, baked into there, even when I follow my guidance essentially with some also creative stuff that I try to do, not creating, but trying to be prudent, we still had that 150 grand deficit to begin with. What's built in there, as you recall, last year, we, if I follow the guidance, we had a, we had a no-deficit budget. We added in your ask. We wound up with about $136,000 deficit that was made up with one-time-only free cash applied. But that threshold, that budget level was baked in. And so, it's, some would call it a structural deficit that's built in there upon which we're adding now. So, the point is that I'm trying to make is that the, you know, the residents of Millville, the taxpayers are going to have to, and the leadership are going to have to wrestle with these challenges of achieving your needs and the needs of the other departments and services that folks need, and do it in a way that is yet to be determined. Because, you know, it's a, people in Millville have to live within their means. I'm sure Blackstone has similar challenges. And when you talk about the minimum local contribution, that helps Millville because it shifts more over to Blackstone. And last year was 105,000 or so. This year, it's 185 grand to our benefit and your loss. And so, I hope it never switches back, but it just might, right? I don't think it will. So, I just want to point all that out because folks at home, who may be watching this, and I know it's a very popular show, folks at home are going to have to be addressing this situation and the leadership as well. And I'm not sure where it's going to go, but we got, we have two months to work through it. And you all are, you know, we're all in this together. So, we'll figure it out. I will also say one last thing. I know you have a little bit of OPEB in there. I know we're going to have a bit of OPEB contribution. I don't know what your current liability is. I think it went down a bit from where it was a few years ago. And that, that's good because of assumptions they make and all of that. But if you, one way to think of OPEB, if you look at, one of the drivers of your budget increases you mentioned was the healthcare. That's, that's, an eighth of your budget is your healthcare cost, right? And it increased eight and 1/2% or whatever the number was that you said. But it's 3.5 million bucks in your budget. I would say that 40% of the participants in the program are retirees, i.e. people who are no longer providing services. And the idea of contributing to OPEB liabilities is to help bring that down versus see that percentage grow. Where are you paying for people who don't provide services anymore? So, I just, that's my soapbox on that one. You've heard it before. I'm glad you don't have tomatoes because you throw them at me right now. So, thank you very much. That's, I just want to say that, okay?
All right.
I do want to, while you're here, thank you, Mr. Town Administrator. I was able to watch your meeting on Monday night. And so, I want to ensure that credit is given where credit is due. And I thank you for actually, your chairwoman stated that it was your idea to have the vote, to be able to have the meeting that we just had earlier. And so, I want to give.
Yes, to extend that from the regional agreement. That's correct.
I want to make sure publicly that I.
And that came from inspiration in a meeting I had with your superintendent. So, I share that.
I want to make sure.
One second. So, I just want to point out too that, because I, 100%, I know everything you just said. I think it's not as easy for the layperson that might be listening. But it's important to point out that the minimum local contributions at an increase of 6.8% to Blackstone and 5.25% to Millville are truly what are bringing these numbers up.
I disagree with you on that, but that's fine. We'll agree to disagree.
Okay.
It's, if you read your regional agreement.
Just as you have, you know, we're submitting our budget to you, we, those numbers are driven by the state.
Correct.
Right? So, we, we saw that and said, like, we, so we brought our other items down to try to adjust where that would have landed. So, because the state has been increasing the, you know, the burden to the towns on payments to the school, we just don't have the revenue to supplement it. And I'm not saying the town does either, but to evenly distribute it is probably what is most fair.
I won't go on that too much. But if you had the excess.
I'm curious to see his.
Well, I'll give it to you. All right? The minimum local contribution, because you have 15 million to split up amongst the towns, right? And you add up your both minimum local contributions, it's 11 million bucks of that 15 million. The rest is transportation split by enrollments, and the final balance is what's left, and that's split by enrollments. If it was all split by enrollments, we'd be paying 185 grand more. You'd be paying 185 grand less. That's all. But you're not at the point where the minimum local contribution has exceeded the amount that you have to assess to the towns. When it does, then, then you're into what you're talking about.
The burden to the taxpayers.
That's correct. Okay. So, that, thank you very much.
So much.
Good job. Well done. You did it two years in a row.
We agree.
Without a finance director. So, I'm excited you have somebody.
Add it to your resume. Any other public comment to the budget for FY '25? Add it to your resume. Any other public comment to the budget for FY '25? All right. We'll be moving to a motion to consider and approve FY '25 school district budget as presented. Motion, once made, we'll open our discussion.
I'll make the motion to approve the budget as presented for discussion.
Motion made by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. All right. So any comments or questions about what is in here, what we do with it?
This was a very long budget cycle, I think we would all agree on. And I just hope everyone at home understands just how much we went through every number. And we sent it back to the leadership team time and time again, like, we can't present this to the towns. We have to do better. And it was such a constant back and forth that there's a thank you that is due to the leadership team as well because they were constantly looking at these numbers. It's still-
It is still a work in progress.
Yeah.
Because whatever, certifying tonight, a dollar amount holds us to that. And the only thing we can do is we can keep that number, or we can go down from there. If, for some reason, we found a pot of money, we would, you know, we would recertify to add that revenue to our working budget. Or, all right, any other?
If I may, just to, to the point in the earlier hearing, the, this budget being certified at this number, and I know it's bare bones, and the school nurse concern has me concerned. Is that, you say we can address it at a later date, but if we don't have the funding, and we can't go up, I don't know, just maybe you can explain that process to me.
Well, I think what happens is we decide where we want to spend that money. In a short answer, but I'll let Jason answer that.
Yeah, you may decide. The budget number doesn't overall change, but we end up, you know, bringing a nurse on board instead of something else that we were going to do.
Okay.
We also keep a very close eye on the revenues. You know, I don't know what those are going to look like. As, we only have the governor's numbers, so it's possible that the numbers could change in the cherry sheets, and maybe that goes up a bit. I don't know.
I just want to ensure that we didn't hamstring ourselves with that. We can't go up with that. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think, is this tonight, or is this?
Yep, this is the certification.
And we're doing it in the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're actually going to go through one motion at a time on the sheet that's in our packet. And so Dan made a motion to consider and approve FY '24, '25 district budget. But even if we approve that, we have to certify each line, which I think sometimes we've done at a, like, a later meeting, a next week meeting, which we don't have. We don't have a next week.
Yeah, we have one, we have one more.
We don't have next week meetings.
We have to certify today.
So we're doing it today.
Yes.
So without any other questions or comments, I'm looking for a vote on Dan's motion, and then we would move into certification. So motion to consider and approve FY '24, just, FY '25 district budget as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. That's unanimous. So before we adjourn, I think we should do our-
The certification.
It's not on here separately, right?
No, nope. It's on, that's under your motion.
So we're going to do our FY '25 budget certification, which we typically go around and do a motion at a time. Does everyone have the page I'm looking at? Okay. And do we want to just verify these match what we have?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
In the presentation, we have the operating budget at $27,829,275, but our motion number is not the same as that.
Is it a little off?
Yes.
Yeah.
It could be.
I just want to make sure we're giving the right number in the motion.
827-377 is 829-275.
Yeah, it could be a little-
It's about $2,000.
Is it? Yeah, it could have been a little off based on the utility negotiations we were doing.
Is there a question?
It's 27829275. It's this number right here.
So it's the one that was in the presentation.
Can we use this, the number on here?
It's right here. Yep, it's right on the assessment sheet.
Can we just check the bottom part of the motion for the 29,855,935 to make sure that adds up?
Sure. It is 29, yeah, it's 2,000. It should be 29857, 833.
This is the total operating.
That should be the-
857833.
857833, yep.
Madam Chair, I'll be more than happy to make the first two motions if you have the-
We just want to verify all these others before we-
They are all correct. It was just the negotiation of the utilities that went into the operating budget.
Can you just confirm the town ones? The next two look like the totals are, the lines are right, but the totals?
Yes, we have to remember that the capital is at the bottom, so those are assessed differently, separately. So the, these two motions, I know we, I'm laughing because we have this conversation every year.
Yeah.
These two motions don't have the capital in them. These are the two minus the capital. The capital's at the bottom.
Got it.
I know. It is confusing.
All right. So we're going to start with Matt and just go around until we finish, if that's okay. Read it, just so everyone has some-
I move to adopt a gross operating budget for the 2024-2025 school year in the amount of, is it 29,800, I'm sorry, $27,857,833? Did I get that right?
It's 27,829,275.
27829. Say that again.
Yep.
Yes. Motion made by Matt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any discussion? That's correct. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, I move to apply the following reimbursements to reduce said gross operating budget for the 2024-2025 year. Chapter 70, $11,275,939. Regional transportation, $856,952. School choice tuition, $250,000. Charter school reimbursement, $273,845. The above reimbursements total $12,656,736. The total operating budget for 2024-2025 is $29,855,935.
So just correct that to $29,857,833 from the, what's written there.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Motion made by Chuck. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any discussion? Just noted that it is updated to the correct total of $29,857,833.
There we go.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Tara?
I motioned to move, assesses the amount of $11,540,811 in the town of Blackstone to be applied to the operating budget for the year, for the 2024 to 2025 year, which includes $8,513,357 for the minimum contribution, $1,115,964 in exclusionary costs, and $1,911,490 in supplemental investments.
Second.
Motion made by Tara and second by Dan. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
I move to assess the amount of $3,744,387.06 to the town of Millville to be applied to the operating budget for the 2024-2025 year, which includes $2,697,206 for the minimum contribution, $386,007 in exclusionary costs, and $661,175 in supplemental investments.
Okay, motion made by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. That won't be confusing.
Oh, sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Dan?
I move to apply the following amounts to the gross operating budget for the year 2024-2025. Excess and deficiency, 100,000. Medicaid, 170,000. Revenue, user fees, 89,000. Revenue gate fees, 15,000. Revenue classroom rental, 80,000. Revenue pre-K tuition, 115,000.
Second.
Motion made by Dan, second by Carrie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Carrie?
I move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $381,251.91 to be assessed solely to the town of Blackstone, which includes $125,200.14 for the FWH Middle School, $103,757.15 for the JFK Boiler Windows Project, and $152,294.62 for the roof projects.
Second.
Motion made by Carrie and second by Dan. Any discussion? I would just like to point out that it is the last payment for the middle school. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
I move to adopt a capital interest budget in the amount of $170,976.94 to be assessed solely to the town of Millville, which includes $43,306.11 for the FWH Middle School, $58,615.45 for the Millville Boiler Project, and $69,055.38 for the roof projects.
Motion made by Ted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any discussion? Same comment, last payment to the middle school. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. And do we have a volunteer for the last motion?
Madam Chair, I'll take it.
Oh, thank you.
I'll make a motion to move to certify the alternate presentation of the total budget representing only monies moving in and out of the general fund. This presentation will be used by the Department of Revenue in the calculation of excess and divisioncy.
Motion made by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It's unanimous. All right. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn our FY '25 budget.
Oh, no.
Public hearing. Motion made by Dan.
Second.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm doing. And now I will open our school committee meeting for March 7th for the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee. Moving right into our agenda, as we've already introduced ourselves many times and said the question almost two hours ago. We're going to just move out of order for a few items. We have a group here for field trip requests under school committee, if there's anyone that isn't opposed to that on our agenda. Yes. Thank you for your patience. We thought we were going to be ahead of schedule, and here we are. So please introduce yourselves and-
Hello, Tracy Ducharme. I'm one of the senior class advisors.
Sue Deslitz, the other senior class advisor.
And I'm Haley Ducharme, one of the class advisors.
Officers.
Officers. I said advisors.
You can advise, too.
So we just came here tonight asking for approval for the senior class trip on Tuesday, May 28th. They'd like to go to Brownstone Adventure Park. It's in Portland, Connecticut. It's like an outdoor activity thing with this swimming and kayaking and rope. Oh, by the way, it's not going to cost you guys one cent, so we got it all covered, okay? We're going to have transportation through Tellstone. We're going to have approximately six staff chaperones. Mr. Ducharme will be there. The school nurse will be there. And like I said, it's all provide, the whole thing will be paid for by the senior class, the money we've raised. We'll be leaving the school about 8:30, getting to Brownstone at 10, leave there at 3:30, get back to BMR about 5. You know, all the kids, the school rules will apply, and they will also have to have permission, parent permission slips and waivers.
Great. Are you renting them any of those cool gazebo things? No?
Are they, do they have the big floor things?
It seems like it's a pretty all-inclusive thing, so it's probably about $60 per student, like 45 for the ticket. We did the middle package. The higher-end packages included wakeboarding, and I would just figure that would be. So like Sue mentioned earlier, but there is swimming, kayaking, rope swing, rock climbing, zip lines, water slides, a rope swing. They can scuba dive, and then there's the inflatable obstacles. And then I think the big part of it is just watching and just having fun and hanging out. There'll be probably about one or two other schools there, too, so they'll get to mingle with other schools. So I know Mrs. Folas has been in the past. She loved it. I've never been. The kids are really excited. We showed them some videos.
It's a lot of fun.
It looks so cool. I'm jealous. It looks cool, so. I know the class offices, we had a couple of meetings, and then we shared it with the class, and it was kind of a slam dunk, so we just kind of went ahead with that one.
Yep.
Something different the kids don't normally get to do, and they'll all be together for the entire trip, which I like, rather than just kind of scattered, being in their small groups.
Lending on an island and dispersing.
Yeah. But they'll all be in one area for us, so that would be nice, you know, so.
That sounds fun. All right. So motion to approve the senior class trip at Brownstone Adventure Park. What date was that again?
May 28th.
May 28th.
Senior week. Motion made by Tara, second by Tara. Any other questions or comments?
No, just I think they're going to really enjoy it.
Yeah, I'm excited for them.
Good times. All right.
All the way to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye, all those, any opposed? Have a good time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here from 34, or are we just going to go through that?
No, yeah, no.
All right. So moving back up the agenda, we don't have our student reps here. They're on a weekend, Stuco?
Yeah, they're doing it.
Moment, yeah.
Yep.
They're out of town. And consent agenda A, warrants in minutes from February 8th. Did we get those back updated in our email?
Yes, in the email.
Motion approved.
Ted was having, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So motion made by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Tara? All those in favor of consent agenda A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous, thank you. And moving on to public forum. And moving on to public forum. This is when we welcome anyone that wants to address the committee. And again, just please state your name and position or town that you're from, if you're a parent.
I just feel bad people that came from Millville left, so...
They must have heard what they wanted. Oh, they're not going to hear your water. I didn't mean it that way. They're going to watch it on YouTube.
I didn't take it that way, no, it's fine.
I assumed they were here for the budget.
No, no, I think I, they were talking about the building. So Jennifer Gale, Chair of Board, the Selectman. I just wanted to take the opportunity to educate everyone, the town's efforts. There are still more people here than we have at our meeting. So the town has adhered to Mass DEP requirements to provide bottled water for the school year. Since I've been on the Board of Selectmen, which is June 2020, this is the first time I recall being asked to do that. We've acted in alignment with Mass DEP and the advice of our water expert. And we talked about this at the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, if you saw the recording. Like if they had said you need to move the students, we would have been incomplete in alignment with you. We've been following, but they tell us, because I don't think I know more than they do. Since July of 2023, the haloic acidic acid reading has been below the 60 parts per billion threshold. Since the October of 2023, the trihalomethanes has been below 80 parts per threshold. And for the entire school year, the average for both haloic acidic and trihalomethanes has been below the threshold. I'm very confident that water notices will be lifted in March, and we actually submitted our water yesterday to be tested for March. So the HA, the haloic acidic acid results would need to be 91 or less, and trihalomethanes would need to be 143 or less. And we've been averaging less than half of those numbers for the whole school year. We voted to provide bottled water for September, October for the '24-'25 school year, regardless of whether or not Mass DEP required it or not. If haloic acidic acid or the trihalomethanes exceed their thresholds, even if they exceeded, but not enough for a water notice. And we'll provide bottled water until we get six consecutive months of readings below the thresholds. In terms of capacity, over 130 gallons has been run through the system, which is approximately 70% of usage. And as a reminder, the exposure that would potentially trigger a health issue is 2 liters of water a day, every day, for 70 years. So that's 25,550 days in a row. And we talked about asking for an order from Mass DEP around the bottled water, but when we met with Mary Jude, she said, why don't we meet in April? And then we'll talk about lifting it. So I, and I don't know if she's going to say, I don't know if she's going to say, great, no more water, no more bottled water now, or she'll say the end of the school year, but she's at least open to having the conversation. Makes me think I maybe should have asked her in December. So I guess the question I have for you, does anyone think anything I said was untrue? Or, or do you have any questions on anything that I said?
Right now?
Right now, of what I just read right now. Does anyone think what I said was untrue?
I don't know what you're getting to.
No, no, I just want to make sure, like, because I...
You're asking, do we agree with you that you're speaking facts?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, perfect.
From, yeah, facts from what you are dealing with, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Hundred percent.
Great. So then I just, so in closing, because I'll be very quick. I just wanted to say that I really wish things had gone differently over the last school year, and I think the good news is that there's still time to fix this. There's time to put the children back in our, one of our newer and nicest buildings in the school district. You could make a motion that's contingent on the March water results, so that if the water notice gets lifted, then the students will be back in that building. I hear from a lot of parents in Millville that that's what they would like to see. They would like to see the building used. Because I believe, well, I believe we'll not be sending water notices. So just, but I understand you probably want to see the results, so you can make the motion contingent on the March results.
When is the next quarter from March?
So they do calendar year quarters. So it's, we have to do January, February, March testing, and we get that average. And then it's April, May, and June testing, and then we get that average. Because we could look back, like...
Which is kind of what we dealt with last July.
Yes, it is exactly what we dealt with all the time.
So, you know, the only thing I want to point out with that is that we were all here February 8th, when Mary Jude told us all that monthly testing doesn't count. One quarter does not count. It has to be consecutive quarters. She wouldn't tell us how many. Did she tell, did she give us a...
No, she hasn't.
So she...
Consecutive quarters for...
For the, for clean water, for no notices.
No, so we are...
We're meeting the...
Based on the math. If, that's what, that's what Dr. Gullett gave us. So he went through the calculations of, so we'll be looking at the April through June of '23, July through September of '23, October through December of '23, and then January through March of '24, provided the March reading for that one month is 91 or lower, or the trihalomethanes is 143 or lower.
Is going to give you one quarter.
They average, but then they'll go back for the year and average all those quarters, and we will not be needing to send water notice. So how the calculation is done is they'll look at the average, they'll look at what the reading was for April '23, May '23, June '23, and create an average. And July '23, August '23, and September '23, and there'll be another data point. And then look October, November, December of '23, and that'll be another data point. And then January, February, March, and another data point. They take the average of those four quarters, so the average, the average the quarter, and then those four data points. And provided March is not above 91 or 143, we will be below the threshold and not need to send water notices. I know it's not easy. I've just been doing this for a long time, many hours every day. But that's, so that's what it would mean. And if you look at the, I brought the presentation with me that Dr. Gullett provided in December, the readings for those since July, since he was on the operations have been on the haloic acidic acid, I have July through December, 22, 31, 18, 41, and 42, and 20. And the trihalomethanes, on the first quarter there was not as good, 161, 97, 113. Then October, 57, 56, 36. But the average of the school year has been below the 80. So the last, we need the March number to complete the first quarter of '24. And then we take the, we look at the averages of Q4 '23, Q3 '23, Q2 '23, with Q1 '24, and then average those. And then that average, if it's below 60 for the haloic acidic acid, there'll be no notice. And below 80 for the trihalomethanes, we will not send a notice. Does that make sense? I know it's not fun.
Can I just ask a question on that? So Q1 of '24 could drop you from needing notices.
Yep.
However, if May was a super high reading, Q2 of '24 could bump you back up to needing the notices. And I think that goes to what Mary Jude's point was, that it needed to be consistent. Where one quarter might drop you from needing them, but the next quarter could bring it right back again.
So that would, we'd probably have similar numbers because with the haloic acidic acid, like I said, the numbers I read were like 18, 21, 40. So it'd need to be a number like 200, I mean, I don't, so I haven't done the math, but it would need to be like the 91 or 143, which is double or triple what we're seeing. So it would, it would be shocking if that happened.
But one quarter could bump you back up. It would be, yes, it can, but it would be out of line.
But we're definitely heading in a direction where that should not happen. I agree with that, and obviously, everyone's hopeful for that. However, and I think that's what's happened in the past, where we've been, we would go, we'd have no notices, and then we'd have one. And it, it would happen, and it was always, this test was from last quarter, and we, then we were shutting the water off, so...
And I just want to add, so we have additional controls in place around the chlorine, and we're adding in more of that, which should just make the readings more consistent, not less. So we've been able to manage this water with the, with the monitoring of the chlorine, and then they'll be adding of a shut-off for the chlorine. So once it reaches a threshold, it'll shut it off, so that we don't exceed. So it's just going to get better, because there'll just be more controls, not less.
That was a couple of months out, right? Or it's manual now?
Do you know when that's coming, Peter?
He's supposed to take delivery this month.
Oh, yay!
Doesn't mean they're going to be installed this month.
Yeah, nothing moves fast.
I mean, there's no denying we're in a better place than we were a year ago. And, 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 you know, a year ago from right now, in March. And then May, June, July. I, I would think it's a little premature for us to make a motion contingent on a Q1. But I, I mean, I understand the process. I know at your meeting, you had other questions as to who our experts were.
Yes.
So I'd like to address that.
Perfect.
And I think another thing you mentioned once again, and again, we were all in the, I'm going to clear this up first because it's shorter than who our experts are. On the information you put out on social media.
Yes.
You mentioned that, again, other towns were like this and were not asked to provide the water.
Yes.
Mary, Mary Jude was here February 8th, and she clarified that's because those towns had their long-term plans in place. That's a huge difference. I felt after that, after she clarified that, because I didn't know that was why there was a difference, that that kind of makes that go away, you know? And, and we're not comparable to Springfield. We're just not. However, do you have an update on long-term plan? Grant, is there a bucket of money?
So, no. Mary Jude's out for March for... She's out for March, just March, for personal reasons. So that's why we're sinking back up in April.
All right. And then, you know, the, I, I don't want to argue. I, I do definitely see the difference in the way you talk to us or the way you talk about us when we're not there, when you're having your meetings. I wish I could be at every meeting, just to participate, and maybe, maybe it would be more civil, or maybe it would be back and forth, because I would be there to like rebut the things you say. And, you know, I think you and I are both doing the same kind of work with our towns, and it would just, it would just be that much more in each of us to feel that we had to be at every single meeting, right? It would double the burden of time. But when, when we do catch up and we watch them, it's upsetting to see, like, some of the slander and against the school committee, against, you know...
What, what did you feel I said that was slanderous?
So in the past, there's been mentions of, of the town, of the school ordering work that the town should pay for. And, you know, those, that's before. So, but in your meeting last week,
Yep.
you said, who are their experts? I'd like, nobody, so I'm just going to clarify for you right now that our experts are your experts. We, we, we are not in the business of water operator.
Okay, great.
We have depended on Mary Jude. We have depended on your prior water operator, who would be Bob, and now your new water operator. And I think without going down a rabbit hole, we can agree that there's been some derogatory stuff from the water operator. However, the current water operator. However, we all sat here last May when, and were told, don't drink the water, don't cook absorbables with the water. And no one said, close the building. No one said, shut it down.
Right.
But in the safety and concern of the students and staff that are in that building, with that being said, to all of us as a group collectively, I don't know how you can, you can sit here repeatedly or at your meetings or on social media and say, why'd they close it? Why'd they close it? If, if you're totally thinking of the well-being of the children and the staff, and you were just told, don't drink the water, don't cook absorbables with the water. I, I just, I honestly don't know how you can sit there and try to keep pushing the issue of it was never clo... We did not close the building. We shifted operations. We still have minimal people in that building, minim, less exposure. And that has always been the intention. That was the motion that night. So I, I just want to clarify that part, that I, I try not to get upset when I hear it, but it's upsetting for, because you keep saying the same talking points, Jen, and you're just... You're, that stuff is done. We're almost at a better place. I, I think we can all agree on that. We're almost there. And, and it is the first time that Millville has been able, has had to, or been, and put the resources into it to get to this point. And for that, I mean, unfortunately, if it took moving the kids, and if it took, that, it's, it's still going to be, you know, in a better place for the town and the taxpayers and the kids when they get back there.
So I'd like to answer a question why I keep pushing for the children to be back in the building. So two things. So one, no expert recommended moving the kids, Mass DEP or, or Dr. Gullett. And Mr. Ferrari didn't recommend it at the April 27th meeting, or May 16th. I rewatched both of those meetings myself. And then the second reason is we're providing bottled water, so that it won't be drunk and it won't be cut.
And I'm just going to, I'm going to say this once, because I don't want to expose anyone. I don't want to argue about it. But last year at this time, the water was not being provided or paid for, and we were arguing over it. And if you go back to your June meeting, when I attended, because you had made the great, the motion of supplying water for the rest of your $15,000, and then I sat there and we fought over that on who was... We want to set precedence that the school's going to pay for the water, and we're going to reimburse you. And so those things do, that was a burden on us that we didn't need, a burden on, I mean, we're here for the kids and the educating of the students. Fighting over bills and paying for water? Fighting over bills and paying for water? That should be, it should just be, the water and electricity and everything in that building should just work. And, you know, I think of it as the, we pay the electric bill, but you supply the conduit that comes through the ground. There's, there's the difference. The well versus the actual water, if there was an expense to it. You, you know very well that, starting last January or February, or, actually, I'll back it up because I said I'm going to say this once. When the regional agreement changed and Blackstone and Millville kids were in that building, Peter did not want to pay the water operations of Millville Elementary School anymore. And he was continuously bringing it to the select board, saying he didn't feel that he could authorize it. He didn't feel that it was in his, you know, he wanted to make it an operating expense of the district because the Blackstone kids were now occupying the building with the Millville kids. And that is, that is before, unfortunately, in the middle of all of that, unfortunately, the water went bad. And looked disgusting. Everyone said it was fine, but it looked really bad. And then, we were told, "Don't drink it, don't cook absorbables." So, it kind of all mixes together, but you, you weren't supplying water. And I, I know you're using, like, we were never told before me, before July, to supply water, like, that's a good thing? I actually think she thought it was being supplied, and I think it's actually a negative thing that she had to tell you to supply water. Maybe it was supposed to be supplied every time there was a notice. I, I'm not going backwards. So.
So, I just wanted to come out.
I hope that helps.
It does. No, no, no. But I, so when I got on the Board of Selectmen, we were not paying for the water. And so, I don't know how all of you feel, but my first year, I was kind of just listening.
Not paying for the water?
We were not paying for the water my first year on the Board of Selectmen. Not paying for bottled water, yes, thank you. Not paying for bottled water.
But wa, MES Water Operations.
And Water Operations, no, Water Operations, just generally. So, I was just kind of listening, and everyone said, "This is what we do." And I was like, "Okay." So, because I was not a big rock the boat kind of person my first year on the Board of Selectmen. And I think that many of you can probably appreciate that your first year on the school committee are just kind of listening, and like, "This is what we do." And I was like, "Oh, okay, that sounds good." And, like, I, I really do feel that the regional agreement still is not clear on that. But let me finish. So, although I don't think it's clear on that, I agree with you, Erin, that if I were renting an apartment building and someone said, "By the way, figure out the water on your own," I'd be like, "What are you talking, like, what?" And I also think a preschooler's my, because my children went there preschool, and being like, "Oliver, please sir, may I have some more?" We're like, "No, you can't have any water." And so, it's more that, I don't know from a legal perspective if it's required, but I think from doing the right thing. That's what we're doing. So, it took me longer to get there, Erin, on that point. It did. Because I was kind of listening and following other guidance. Peter and I still talk about this too. Jennifer is not in the regional agreement. The right thing to do, I think, is to provide the water. That's what I think the right thing to do is. So, that's what we're doing. And we would still like to work with your attorney to have a side letter, because that would really quiet someone else. And then, it would be, we have a side letter now, and this is their agreement, and that would be okay. Because that does make his life a little easier, if it's exactly how written down. So, I am sorry that it took me longer to kind of get there on that. And you're right, Erin, that, that, you're 100% correct on that.
I'm, I'm not even looking for that, I appreciate the apology.
No, but you should, you should be, know it.
What I'm asking, though, is at your meetings, like, we are, we are working together as much as we can, right? And we don't come to our meetings and talk about dumping Millville. And, and, and that is really where your conversations go. Like, I, you're talk about getting, you sent out a survey to the entire town on, "What would you like to do with this building? Do you want us to take it back for revenue?" And that was all, like, fabricated, but that wasn't driven by any, it wasn't driven by a feasibility study? It wasn't driven by, it was all?
It's in, it's informational, so I understand that you, that might have upset you, and I thought that it might.
I mean, it's all the results, but, so, nobody wants it not to be Millville Elementary School.
That's true.
So, with that being said, let's move on. Let's, let's stop the negativity and any of us feeling like, "Well, we got to go to that meeting tonight because the, otherwise, they're going to talk about us." And, you know, we've tried to sit back and let you guys get this figured out. There is nothing I want more than the, the kids to be back in that building. It would have been ideal had we been doing a reconfiguration and going back to that building. And, you know, with that, I'll just say, we're still in the middle of a feasibility study. And I believe it will dictate us in that direction as well. Any other?
I don't see it, if I may. Yeah, when you first sat up here, you, you, you listed a, a set of facts.
Yes.
And I said, "Absolutely."
Yes, perfect.
And, and I agree. And, and, but there were other things that are said that are not factual. And, and, like, just your last meeting. And I, I mean, I've been around this for quite some time, so, like, personal attacks on me, or if I'm the ringleader, or what references, that's okay. I, I, I can, because that is, it's not, um, like, it's, the problem or the issue is bigger than any one of us individuals. But I just want to touch on a couple of things. And, and you're right, like, getting to understand how the regional agreements work, you know, being a new selectman. I mean, and understanding the school district world compared to the selectman world, compared to the real world outside, where, you know, it's, there's a lot there. But, the, the, the bottled water, uh, when you, you got on and, and first got on the Board of Selectmen, and, and the bottled water was being supplied, uh, by the district.
Yes.
You understand that 75 cents on the dollar of that bottled water was being paid by the town of Blackstone.
Yes.
At the same time, you're challenging whether or not you're responsible for providing that water for the Millville Elementary School. The town of Blackstone has been providing water on the taxpayers' dime to the complex. So, I mean, it's, it's just a slippery slope to go down, because it's understood, because, and, and I understand the confusion, because from, you know, 1982 till 2019, the Kennedy Maloney, the elementary schools in Blackstone were under the operation of Blackstone as far as the, the water provision. It's just like the Longfellow School was in Millville and the new Millville Elementary School. And now that the kids integrated in those grades, where Peter would have a, a concern, saying, "Well, why isn't it in the, in the district?" But the towns continued to provide, to private, provide the water. As a selectman at the time, I knew that the town was, that this district was providing that bottled water. And for the same reason you probably did, is I'm not going to rock the boat. I'm not going to be the guy that sits there and says, "Well, we don't want to pay for water for the kids." You know, because they're Millville kids. And then, some other politicians would say that, but I am not going down that road. There's no way that, because I, I don't, I believe that when we're partners in a district, all the kids are ours, Blackstone and Millville's. You know, our responsibility, whether I'm a Blackstone selectman or a member of the school committee, because we are partners in this, in this venture. And, and as far as, like, tha, that's concerned, like, the, if you want a side note, I, I don't, I don't know, then Blackstone would need one. I mean, like, Blackstone currently, right now, pays for all those kids' water at the complex. And, and, and there's no, like, there's no uproar to that. And, and you could say, "Well, they can have, you know, bottled water from Millville." But, and, and I, I don't want to go backwards. I, I said several, several months ago to you, like, you can be the, you, you wouldn't, you alone start, I think, started. You got the rest of your board that came around to recognize the issue. I mean, you had adversity between two water operators, like, two oper, arguing with each other. And you had, you know, you, you, you're facing things that really haven't been solved over the last 20 years. And you have five or six months of pretty decent results. But there was 240 months before that that was like this, like this. And I don't think the school committee's request to let you finish the project, the kids are in a safer environment now. I made a promise to you the last selectmen's meeting that I was at, that once that's resolved and, and that time period goes by, I'd be the first one to make the motion to put the kids back. And, and Millville Elementary is clearly the better learning facility, building, building for the kids. And, 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 you know, comments were made that this is political, that this is that, and I don't, it's not for me, I don't think it's for any other member of the board. This was about the misinformation, the mixed information, the conflicting information that we were getting through this period of time. You have seemed to gut things under control, a, and you have consistent, you're starting to have consistent positive results, and I think we're all hopeful that, that, that continues. I know I am. And, and I, and at any time, I know in that meeting, your last meeting, you said you reach out to selectmen's. I've reached out to you in the past and said you can reach out to me. I'm, I'm always willing to speak to you on this. And, and I mean, the, I mean, the Facebook nonsense is a Facebook. I would have, I recommend that you.
Can we move on with?
Well, I, I want to, I want to finish.
We don't normally interact in public forum, I need to wrap this up.
I'm just, if I'm finishing up, everyone else interacted. I mean, I just wanted to finish up, I want to clarify.
It's just getting really long, and public forum is usually just to state, not to have a whole.
So, we're going to address that now, after we just had a half hour, Jen?
That's my opinion.
All right, well, I'll just, I'll, I'll just finish up with, the fact that, the one statement that was made in your meeting is that this will cost the taxpayers more with the building being the way it is right now. The operations of the Millville Elementary School that's still being, um, used as the administration is, um, th, those operating costs are still being paid by the district, which is, you know, the 75% is still coming from Blackstone as well. So, it's not costing Millville taxpayers anymore. It would actually cost them more if you had the building back right now and had to pay for those operations, so.
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that, but.
Yeah, we talked about that.
That's not the direction that we are.
No, absolutely not.
But, I think Peter has said it many times to, to you guys, like, this could be a revenue source, or, you know, is, is, does the pro of paying off MSBA outweigh the, you know, the con, the con of paying MSBA outweigh the pro of making money on it? That is not, it, it's actually not up for negotiation, we have a lease with you. Just putting that out there, I think, until 2032?
Yes, 2032.
So, we, you know, that is, we're, we're just looking for a more positive public and personal communication point, okay?
Yep.
And talking about getting rid of the school, talking about, and, um, just to clarify one more thing, and then we'll be done, that, you know, you, you did say, "Well, why wasn't this 10 years ago? Why didn't they close it when the water was bad?" And let's, I, again, all the other things that happened last year, that, we're arguing over payments, and your water operator quit because he wasn't paid. I know you wanted him to, that's a different conversation. However, he was not being paid because of other arguments. So, it became a very big burden on us, and we had to know where those kids were going to be for the first day of school. And we didn't know if we were going to be fighting over paying for bottled water, or, you know, and, I appreciate you coming here and giving us updates whenever you have them. And, you know, just know that if we're not there, I do try to watch later in the week, and the, the efforts are appreciated.
Okay. So, in the interest of being quick, Tara, I appreciate that. So, we're not fighting over water bills anymore? Because I do always think of Oliver asking for more, like, that's just not cool. I will make sure that we conduct boss meetings like you're in the room, Erin.
I appreciate that.
I wrote that down.
Because I kind of am, when I'm watching later.
Um, I still want to encourage you to put the children back. Because I do have people who are like, "Why isn't this happening? Why aren't you doing it? Look at how, how much progress you're making."
Yeah.
I am getting a lot.
Nothing, we want more.
Why, why I'm pressing so hard is because people are pressing me so hard.
And, um, you know? We will keep that in the forefront of, you know, of our conversations.
I, I try to get them to come to these meetings, but. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, any other discussion for public forums this evening? All right, moving on to school committee, approve warrant articles to submit, um, to the town for their town meetings. We have some language here. Millville and Blackstone.
Yes, these are the articles.
We're submitting the same ones to both. So, would anyone like to make the motion for our warrant articles? These will be, um, submitted to the towns and voted on separately from our budget. Uh, it's a specific warrant article from our schools.
I move to approve the FY25 warrant articles as written and be submitted to the towns of Blackstone and Millville.
Okay, motion made by Tara, is there a second?
Second.
I'm doubling up a whole night.
I'm going with Matt for that one. Okay, motion made by Tara and second by Matt. Uh, these will cover school committee stipends, which is a yearly mo, uh, article. And the OPEB, which is also a yearly article now. And I guess we are foregoing any. All right. Any other discussion, questions?
Are these two separate warrant articles in each town?
They'll be read and voted on separately by.
The other, um, were the conversation on the mini splits, and my discussion with both, um, Peter and, with Blackstone, said they didn't feel that that needed to be a separate item. It was a small amount, and they thought they could do it through, you know, other, other budget means.
Oh, oh.
That was the only, that was the only, um, piece that.
That's a capital piece.
Yeah, it was a $41,000 expense for the mini splits for the central rooms here. But, um, after discussions with both, I didn't think that it was, the town felt it was necessary to do an article on that.
All right. So, motion to approve the warrant articles as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous, thank you. MSBA update feasibility agreement to be finalized by April 11th. Is that when our next, um?
Yes.
Are you presenting?
Is it, is it okay, Tara, if I touch on it quickly? So, in your packets, you have the feasibility study agreement documents. And I just, I only, I certainly wasn't trying to, uh, kill trees here, but I put them in there because I wanted you to see them before they come in front of you in April. Uh, just so you have time to get familiar with, there's a lot of jargon in here. And so, uh, we are very excited, we will be on the board, the Mass School Building Authority Board meeting on, um, April, oh gosh, Tara, 24th?
24th?
I think, I think 24, somewhere around there, 26, 24, 24th. And so, uh, they will formally vote us into feasibility, which is great. Uh, we did finally settle our enrollment. And, uh, I appreciate their entertaining, um, a few conversations with us and did agree to increase our enrollment, um, from the initial, so that's good request. And then, uh, that moved us into the feasibility study agreement. So, I will send the necessary documents off to our legal counsel to review those. Uh, we'll make sure that we get everything in place and ready for the school committee for April 11th, so the committee can approve, um, the documents that you need to, and we can move on to their board meeting. So, good news there.
And that's virtual?
Yes. And when we have the link, I'll send it out to everybody, so anyone can jump in.
Moving on, we did have one other field trip request. We will just do them separately, it was grade four Mystic Aquarium. It looks like about 120 students, 26 chaperones. I believe BMPTO pays for busing, and, um, this is really just because they're leaving the state, I believe.
Yes, it's Connecticut.
Okay, so, motion to approve the Mystic Aquarium field, grade four field trip. It looks like it is on June 5th?
It's almost.
Motion made by Carrie, second?
Second.
Second by Tara. Any questions or discussion? Three buses, paid for, again, by the PTO. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. And superintendent mid-cycle evaluation, this is just information only. At our next meeting, we will be receiving Jason's mid-cycle evaluation, um, in the midst of all the other work being done. He's keeping up on all of his, anything you want to comment about that?
No, you'll, we'll do the same, uh, process, if that's okay?
That would be perfect.
Okay.
We'll do the presentation and, um, communication the same way we did last year. All right, report of the superintendent.
Great, I will move quickly. First, it's just the updated organizational chart. We, it's, we actually had this, it's in your packet, we had this done in August. But, our time together became focused on other areas, so we put it off. But, since we have our new finance and operations director starting, we wanted to make sure that this actually gets in front of the school committee and officially approved. If there's nothing different on here, then we already have. It's just, we haven't, we just haven't voted the new, uh, updated, um, draft, that's all. So, that, um, needs to be approved. But there are no changes from what we're doing.
All right, so, motion to approve the organizational chart as presented. He didn't sneak in any, uh?
No, actually. Just housekeeping.
Yes, we did have it last fall.
Yes.
All right, motion made by Matt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous, thank you.
Uh, the next item, thank you, is the Student Opportunity Act Plan. And just so, this isn't anything new. We've talked about the Student Opportunity Act a bunch of times. Anytime there's an increase in Chapter 70 money, this year, we saw an increase of, I believe it was, uh, just a little over $47,000, which is the $30 a student. The state is, um, identifying that as student opportunity funds. As a result, they require every school system to write a lengthy and extensive Student Opportunity Act Plan. It's a, it's.
It's a kind of like a thank you for this?
Yeah, so.
$30 per student?
So, um, we actually are receiving 130,000 less in revenue, but in that configuration. So, we actually are receiving 130,000 less in revenue, but in that configuration, there's a $47,000 increase in Chapter 70, even though the overall net loss is 130. We're required to write this plan by the state, and as such, the school committee is required to now vote it and approve the plan. The, what's interesting is the plan itself is actually an electronic document that you have to work in. It's in a, it's in a grant system. I can't bring it to you. We're, we're going to write our plan around our literacy work that we're doing next year anyways, around selecting updated literacy materials. Literacy is our year next year in our, in our curriculum revision cycle. So, it's a formality. I just have to tell the Department of Ed that you voted the plan. The plan is for us to use this money. We're not going to use it on the literacy work, frankly. We're going to use it on, like, salaries, but we have to write a plan. So, there are many districts that are in the same situation, where, and it's a compliance thing. So, I'm asking the committee to approve the $47,000 to do the literacy work that we're going to do. I have to write something.
So, looking for a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act funding for FY25 in the amount of $47,910 to focus on the selection of high-quality literacy materials for both core instruction and intervention materials.
So moved.
Motion made by Chuck. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You can send them a big fat thank you.
Yes, I will. I was confused, and they said, I said to them, like, I actually, they said, what money? What are you talking about? Like, you guys gave us less money. So, anyhow. And then, lastly, District of One event, and Matt too, I don't know if we're going to jump on that, but we're super excited. We've got a lot, a lot in the cooker. Matt's doing a lot of work on it, and as our PTO, our BMEPTO leaders. So, we've got an event coming up.
Yeah, we, it's starting to really kind of grow. I think you and I talked about that when I first got on last year, and how do we make it bigger? I spoke with Sergeant Hurwitz at the Police Department. He got really excited about it, spent half a day, better part of four hours, just making calls. So, the amount of organizations that he reached out to outside of the town, that will kind of just bring some excitement to it. We reached out, CPAC is doing their touch of trucks. That's going to be awesome as well. We've got commitments from the local organizations, obviously the Scouts, Lions Club, winning hair back from a few other organizations, Historical Society, Historical Museum is going to be interested as well, so. Lot more to come, but it's going to be a good event. I understand that Blackstone, I don't know what they're doing for Memorial Day, if there, if there is a big Memorial Day celebration going on again, so this might kind of be the celebration for spring. So, hopefully, hopefully, they have something as they normally do, but.
Is there a date for this?
So, it's going to be May 11th. And tentatively, 1 to 4.
Yeah.
Tentatively, because with the amount of stuff, I mean, we have, right now, we have commitments from, you know, we're going to have a canine demonstration, possibly a, there's going to be a lot of stuff. Let's just say.
Yeah, a bunch of activities, yes. So, think about last year, but with way more, and last year was great. We had over, I think, 500 people last year. So, I, I'm, this is awesome. It's like, every year, it gets bigger and better, and more people get involved, and that's the whole goal. It turns into a great community event, so. Matt, thanks for your work on that. More to come.
We will look forward to the updates. All right, moving on to.
Yes, yeah.
Business office, personnel report, and the expenditure.
Yes, you have the personnel report in your packet. That's to be received and placed on file, and then you also have the expenditure, updated expenditure report. We've made great progress on that. Each of our schools has come up with a spending plan from March 1st through June 30. We've reviewed those spending plans. All the resources that are, that were encumbered, that don't need to be, we will release those encumbrances and close out those POs. The items that, that were not budgeted, but are things that popped up that the schools need are on that list. All those plans will go to Mr. Spagna, so that he's ready. When the ordering comes through and people are working with their budgets, we'll have a really good sense of, of kind of forecasting where we're going to land FY24. And right now, I think we will hit our goals. I think we will hit our target. So, we did, a big kudos to our administrative assistants in our buildings, and our principals, and our business office. Everybody's been working very hard, very focused, to make sure that we can land FY24 where we are hoping to. Lots of, lots of good work there. Yep. And that's the business office report.
Moving on to facilities. Faster? Yeah, we were a little behind. We caught up.
Okay, good evening. So, as you know, NCOL Fire Protection came out February 22nd to do the inspection of the kitchen suppression systems. At that time, they found that they recommend a new nozzle be installed over the new steamer that was put in recently at the high school. The one that's currently there does not hang directly over the device. I did talk to Jen Paradise, and she has the means to have this work done, so we're going to get that done. And the high school is also going to receive a new compressor for the refrigeration system. We scheduled that work for March 15th, because it's a PD day. They need to bring a crane on site to drop the unit onto the roof, so it'll be less distraction to the students in the parent drop-off area. Baseball fields and softball fields, I'm dying to get down on those. I just wish it would stop raining. I just don't want to cause more damage to that than.
Yeah. Early spring, though.
Yeah.
It's going to be earlier.
Well, the first of spring is 15th, or?
Can I ask a question on those?
Yeah.
Behind the, behind the fence, like, if they hit a foul ball, right? And it goes back into the woods. Is that our, is that still our property over there? It is? Okay.
Yeah, we own all the way down to the stream that runs in the back.
We don't have the stuff that we could do to clear out some of that, do we? I'm not only asking because we lose a ton of balls over there.
Yeah, I know. It's all poison ivy down there, too.
Yes, it is, and the kids were getting it, and they were getting ticks, too.
So, unfortunately, we can't use pesticides on school grounds to kill that.
Is that right behind the back?
It's not where we put the net.
Yeah.
Is there another net that we can put over?
There isn't.
Addition to what's there?
I don't think so. I don't believe so.
At one time, there was none, so we just recently installed that six-foot fence.
I just wondered if we still.
This is a bad time to say, like.
Well, I mean, we're losing a lot of balls. I just wondered if it was our, if it was our land.
It is definitely our land.
Wasn't that eaten goats?
Not a terrible idea.
If we can find some goats, that'd be awesome. They eat it.
Pick up the balls, too. Those would be really good goats.
It'd have to be.
Yeah, who's picking up all the?
Fertilizer.
Just hope it doesn't fertilize it, so it grows back. They might have to be slash-billy goats to make that banking put, anyways. Yep, so moving on, the shot put desk, discus nets, and those will be installed tomorrow. I have a couple of custodians that are going to stay and work on that, so those will be up tomorrow, where they're supposed to be good. Tennis courts, whole nother issue. We did put the nets up. The gates are unlocked now. They can use, one of the gates is unlocked. One of the locks is frozen. We got to get that opened up, but they can be used. However, there are cracks. I did have Premier Seal coating out today to look at them. Unfortunately, there's so much groundwater underneath the asphalt, and the asphalt just keeps moving because it's on the banking and possibly wetlands as well. So, he's going to write up a recommendation for us and get it to me. He did say he'll come out, and there are a couple of patches that are sticking up a little bit that could be tripping hazards. He will come out, scrape those down for us in the meantime.
Is he the same one who repaired the, were they just repaired last year? Is he the same guy?
Two years ago. Two years ago.
It doesn't have, it sounds like it doesn't have a good base, so.
Been there forever, though. I don't get that.
Those were redone in 2023, I believe, the year this, this school opened up. The same year the track was done. They did the tennis courts.
Not 20, what year?
I'm sorry, 2003.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm sorry, 2023.
Yeah, I think you're right, Chuck.
Well, they've been resurfaced since then. Are you saying?
Resurfaced. Oh, they may have been, yeah.
It keeps, every time you have effects, it keeps cracking.
At least twice in the last 12 years.
I know the track has been resurfaced.
What is?
The track has been. Tennis courts probably, but that's just a, like a driveway.
We did the track and the tennis courts the same year.
Same time, yeah.
Couldn't even tell you what year that was.
Yeah, I wasn't the groundskeeper then, so.
What, um, I mean, I think we'll have to just wait till their recommendation, but knowing that somehow we have, hopeful that we have a project coming, you know, to get five more years out of them when they've been there for as many years as they have. We've got to, if it takes this yearly maintenance. Because I believe some, you know, simple plan that's out there is moving all our fields to the front, too, so we'd have a new home, hopefully. Someone's not made up design yet.
Right. Okay, so moving on to the, I covered everything, so the middle school. NCOL Fire also recommend the suppression tanks were expired, so those are going to be replaced, and they're actually coming tomorrow. They just called me today. They're going to come tomorrow and do those after 1 o'clock. Kitchen isn't being used. I'd like to give a shout out to the Blackstone Fire Department for coming out to assist us with running the cable back down the Massachusetts flagpole. That's the flagpole that carries Massachusetts flag. They literally spent like four hours here helping me get it done.
With the ladder?
With the ladder truck. Amazingly, they got no calls while they were here, so.
Well, you were up in the bucket, so thank God they didn't, huh? You'd be driving off down the, I get it, he sends a picture. He's like, hey, waving to my, what's going on? He's all the way up in the.
What does everything look up there?
It's a great view, let me tell you that. Right down on the roof. Yeah, so, but, big shout out to them for staying here that length of time and getting it done, because without that truck, we couldn't get it done.
Is the flag up?
It was just a ladder truck.
No, it's the flag up.
Oh, yes. Well, I did tell them to put it up, so.
The pole's operational.
The pole is operational. So, what had literally happened was the mechanism inside to crank the flagpole, the cable up, wasn't holding, so the flag would just drop back down. I took that mechanism out. It costs, it was going to cost us between $400 and $700 for a new mechanism. I took it home, grinded out the spot welds, took it apart, cleaned it, rewelded it, put it back together, and no guarantees, but I'm hoping it'll last. But I made every effort, so.
Thank you.
So, in the meantime, the cable, we had that windstorm, and the wind grabbed the cable and pulled it right out, and I'm talking like probably 70 feet of cable. And then, we had to thread it back down, a hole in the middle, like, that was that big to get it all the way back down. And what had happened was it bunched up, built up a big rat's nest. We had to snake it out, and it was, it wasn't like, I had to take the little ball off at the top so we can get the wire down.
Lose your sweatshirt string.
Is it worth putting back?
It is. It was either like, cut the flagpole in half, or, but, we got it done. And then, JFK, AF Maloney, on the 28th, somehow, we lost power to the septic pumps. This is the pumps that pumped the fluid out to the leach field that enabled our septic tanks to fill up to the max capacity. I immediately put a call into ADC, so a large, you know, shout out to them as well. They were with on the site within 10 minutes pumping the tanks out. So, that was nice. Palmer Electric came out. Palmer Electric used to work for Wellington Pumps, which did the pump system originally. He was an electrician that worked for them, so he knows the system. So, he now owns his own business, so I contacted him. He came out, and he's done work for us in the past. So, we're going to, he's going to come back out tomorrow to diagnose why we lost the power, and there was no power running to the alarm system that should have sounded to let us know that the pumps were off, so it never would have filled up. So, we're going to hopefully get that straightened out. Questions, concerns?
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Are you actively working to run the water in the Millville building?
Oh, absolutely.
It's your, like, are you, it's you?
It's me.
I was actually thinking about what they said the other day about something like, we were already running at 70%. We weren't using the water. So, with that being said, whatever we were running it at to flush, and then for five years, we have not used running water, right?
We certainly weren't drinking it, and on and off with the cooking.
But that makes sense that we're like that close to.
Yeah, it does.
And before I started running it, Dr. Gullit told me to let him know when we're going to start running it, because he needed to bring the outside tank water back up to level to handle the extra 3,000 gallons we were going to run a day, or 1,500 gallons a day, sorry, but he needed 3,000 gallons in the tank, so that we didn't run it dry. So, yeah.
Good to know.
Yep.
Thank you for helping with that.
Not a problem. We all want the kids back there.
Yes, we do.
And staff.
Thank you for that update. We do have user facilities requests, a few of them in here.
And I had to add a couple. They came in, and the only reason we added them was because they, the groups wanted to start. It was the Girls on the Run Club. It was the After School BMEPTO, so it was one of our groups, and then the Rep Soders, the Rise Up Initiative meal. So, we just wanted to make sure that we had this on, so we could get these, so I put them in front of your.
The ones that were over here.
For your seats.
Can we take this as one motion to approve all?
Yeah.
I move to accept all facility requests as written.
Second.
Motion made by Carrie for the user facility requests, and second by Chuck. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous, thank you. Committee forums?
I don't know that I, I guess I'll apologize to Dan for asking to kind of wrap that conversation up earlier. I just think that we need to really focus on keeping public forum, public forum, and have like discussions other ways. I know, working with the towns is really important, but I just feel like it was getting a little long today, so I'm not sure the best way to move forward, but I just want to throw it out there that.
Well, I, like, I, we didn't have a water update on our agenda, and they clearly came here to give us one, so that was the only time that it really fit into this. I think today's long, just because we had the two public hearings, that I thought we were going to be spending 30 minutes each, huh?
I know, I thought we were going to have too much time.
So.
I'm just hopeful that maybe, so we're not rehashing every single meeting, that they said what they wanted to say, and maybe come our next meeting, we can just move with our agenda.
Yeah, no water.
Well, we, and we, I don't want to say we purposely not put a water update on when we've had it, or Scott has brought it to us, or she's been, Jen has been here, but we're not the water operator, so we didn't, you know, I'm not going to put it on the agenda unless we are asked to, so.
Right.
With that being said, I, I think on Monday night, she said she wanted to come to the meeting. She did email me asking to open her meeting if she had a quorum, so. But typically, yes, you're right, the public forum is not a, I kind of just let that go because it was another town body that we needed to communicate with, so. Any other school committee? We do have an executive session tonight, so. I sort of know how this is going to work if Dan's not here to roll call in. Empty Bowl is coming up.
Yes.
March 13th, 5 o'clock.
5 p.m.
So, Wednesday.
March 13th, 5 p.m.
Next Wednesday.
Make sure we have that. That's this, the NHS biggest fundraiser. That's this, the NHS biggest fundraiser of the year for them.
Oh, there's also a meet the coaches night coming up too for spring sports, March 12th.
Tuesday.
Yep. At 6 p.m.
March 12th?
At the high school, yep, for all 6 through 12, spring athletes.
There's a pancake breakfast on the 24th too, for the Boy Scouts at Divine Mercy, 8:30 to 12:30.
What date?
8:30 to 12:30 on March 24th. I hope that's a Sunday.
I think it's a Saturday, yeah.
It's a Saturday, so it's whatever that Sunday is.
Oh.
That is a Sunday. The 22nd is Friday.
Sorry, it was my fault.
Okay. Thanks.
You waiting for me?
Nope.
Not anymore. You saying I'll be sarcastic?
Yep. Timing's good though.
Do you have anything for committee forum?
No.
Okay.
I said enough earlier.
For a motion to move into executive session, we'll take a roll call vote and not to return into our public meeting. Our next school committee meeting is April 11th. We will have to reorg on that meeting because elections are sometime before that. Or reorg our, our board, our seats. And... We don't have any other workshops or anything in March? Do we need any?
I mean, I love spending time with all of you, but you may not want another workshop. But no, we're good till April 11th.
Okay. So motion to move into executive session, not to return to open meeting.
It's almost.
Yes. I'll get ahead of it.
I was, I thought you were giving me that motion. So motion made by Carrie?
Second.[1786.33]